I've been running for like the next about two three weeks.
No, nothing like that. Uh, no.
Alright, good evening everyone and thank you for joining us for this June twenty-fifth Board of Education meeting. Um, as we called the order this evening, I'd like to open with the Pledge of Allegiance, but before we do that, if you do plan to make a call to comment, please complete comment card if it is Misses Keller at this time if you have not already done so. I would ask that you silence your cell phones and remove your hats as we continue. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, can we do the roll call please, Mrs. Keller? Keeney?
Present.
Hanson?
Present.
Montague?
Present.
Murphy?
Present.
Odell?
Present.
Graham Burke?
Present.
And look?
Present.
Alright, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as amended on our current books here to include James Johnson from the M A S B under section G one, Special Presentations and Recognition as presented.
The move. Or?
Then, Jen Cendon, in all those favor.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. And sorry, that's completely my bad. Mr. Johnson had worked this out over a month ago and I completely neglected to make sure it was added to the agenda this all time, but it's not this evening. Uh, first up this evening, as you all are aware, is our budget hearing. Uh, so we will open with, um, we have lots of links here to go through. Uh, Mrs. Rush is here to walk us through all of this and, um, answer questions and whatnot, so we will turn things over to her.
Okay. Better?
Okay.
Okay. It doesn't sound like it's on, is it?
It's on. Oh, you know, it has been turned off right now.
Better?
Probably. Usually if there's more than one.
Okay, so I'm usually carrying. Okay, so we're gonna get started with the amendment to the twenty-four, twenty-five, um, budget. And I would just like to refer you to the supplemental page, um, this was second in the packet that was presented, the financials, um, detailed explanations and comparisons to the March approved amendment. Um, total revenue increase was about eight hundred and eighty thousand, due mostly to an increase in the services U A L offset. Um, there were some per pupil adjustments to the state aid, um, formula in that state aid report, as well as some grant, um, revenue increases. And just keep in mind with those grant increases, obviously you'll see that matching offsets to the expenses as those have to that to zero. So for expenses, again, um, the, the major differences are again outlined in that handout. Um, almost every category you're missing a jump in the expenses due to the U A L increase. Um, maybe those are offset with the revenue. Otherwise, the main increases, um, from March to June were resulting in approximately one point two million dollar expenditure increase, um, from thirty-four point two million at the end, or excuse me, the beginning of March to the thirty-five point four million at the end of June projection. Um, it was about thirty, three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in grants with the offsetting revenue. Um, so the stepping cost increases, increases to contracted services in transportation. So the projected expen- expenditures, uh, for the June thirtieth year end is approximately thirty-five point four million. Okay, so where in March, we projected loss, um, at the end of the year was gonna be about one point six million, which would leave our fund balance around seven million or twenty point five six percent. The adjustments and amendments to the budget for twenty-four, twenty-five as of the end of June, um, it's a one point nine million dollar, um, expenditure deficit, um, thirty-three point four-ish million in revenues and then thirty-five and a half almost. Um, and expenditures leaves us with about a one point nine million dollar deficit for the year, bringing the fund balance down to six point seven million or eighteen point nine three percent. Which is still very healthy fund balance type of year, so we can get excited about that. Uh, for the remainder of the funds, um, because we didn't have official amendments, we're just gonna compare those to the July first budget as presented, um, in June of twenty twenty-four. So the de- there was a decrease in revenue, mostly due to a federal revenue decrease. Um, in expenditures for that overall due to a decrease in food and cost. So, uh, we all know here, um, when we set the budget for the Food Service Fund, we're projecting about a three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar loss. Um, as of June twenty-fifth today, projecting closer to a three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar loss, bringing the projected fund balance to four hundred and one thousand eleven dollars. For Community Service Fund, which for those who are younger, that's our essentially Argentine, um, programs. There was an increase in revenue, mostly due to the GSRP dollar increase, um, this year with this loss that we were reported. Um, just remember those are restricted revenues, so not only do you have to offset expenses and act to zero, but we're also, you know, can't use those revenues against non-GSRP expenses or payments. Uh, we did, um, some reflected here, um, in detail, but we did receive fifty thousand dollars in GSRP startup funds for two classrooms, um, that we were awarded, so we were actually able to offset some of the construction costs within new, um, with two of those classrooms that we're constructing over at Early Childhood Center. So one thing to keep in mind when we're looking at the Community Service Fund is, we do have a lot of GSRP kids, especially the increase this year, but with those restricted funds, we did have our non-GSRP revenue as of June twenty-fifth is about two hundred and twenty-seven thousand six eighty-seven, with our non-GSRP expenses at about three hundred and forty-one thousand. So, while they seem, you know, we have all this GSRP money, we do, but we have to remember we have all those other expenses that we can't offset, so that's why we're still seeing that decrease, um, in fund balance. So that leaves us with a projected ending fund balance of June thirtieth, uh, hundred and seventy-seven thousand one hundred and six dollars. For the sinking fund, um, the end of this year for twenty-four, twenty-five, we're looking at tax revenues of about one point one million, expenditures of two hundred and thirty-five thousand, um, which adds to our sinking fund balance approximately nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand for an ending balance of four million eight hundred and eighty thousand two hundred and thirty dollars. Student Activity Fund, um, typically, as you know, we just budget these to zero, in and out with all those, um, activities with our student programs. Um, this year our revenues were three hundred and sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars, offsetting expenditures of only three hundred and forty-eight thousand two thirty-two, so overall adding about twenty thousand five hundred dollars to that fund for an ending balance of four twenty-five, um, and nineteen dollars. That's all I have for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget amendment for the funds. If anyone have any questions? Ms. Murphy?
Thank you, Miss Luck. Um, Mr. Rush, you talked earlier, you talked earlier about the increase in expenses for General Fund, and one thing I caught going through the process was the contracted services.
Yes.
Raped quite a bit.
Yeah.
Um, why were they up quite a bit? Why were they up so much?
Um, so contracted services are in a variety of, um, different programs. We saw an increase in the community education programs with our, um, coach costs and our guests, um, guests leave with coaches and then, um, additional programs, the community at Marzal, that all those coaching costs come out of there. So it's an increase there, um, with the teachers for the classes there as well. Um, and then it also has things like perceptive, court funding rentals, things like that, just overall, all contracted services across the board increased. Um, and our operations and maintenance, that's in our A P M, custodial services, waste management, lawn care, all of that, um, all of those there.
But you obviously budgeted for some of them when you built the original budget, so.
Correct.
I, I understand the, um, you had programs, you had coaches or whatever, but I'm just kinda trying to dig down to how much was not basically offset by any revenue. It was kind of just a growth of contracted services that really can't be, uh, excused to more volume of activity.
Sure, a lot of it was in the facilities and maintenance, um, was on increased maintenance supplies as well as maintenance contracted services.
And that was not, not expected, obviously, I started.
I mean, the budget for what you think, and as, as the year goes on, things break, we gotta do maintenance on fields, things like that. We just have to make adjustments to see how.
Alright. I think that's pretty much it. I did, uh, the issue with the Community Service Fund again with overtime, I'm a little confused about that. So you're saying that when we take in eight hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in revenues and that's largely for the, uh, GSRP program?
Correct, the GSRP, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. The GSRP, um, was five hundred and eighty-seven thousand plus the additional fifty thousand for the classroom, sure.
How do you show revenue here with eight hundred and fifty-five thousand?
If you refer to the, the packet with the actual financials, um, there was a preschool revenue of just under eighty thousand, Eagle Club revenue of just over ninety-two thousand, um, and then there was some of that U A L state revenue that we allocated to our state as well.
So, I was a little surprised that, that this, um, program still lost a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, like I mentioned, there's just some preschool expenses, preschool staffing, um, all those sorts of things that are non-GSRP allowable that we still have to take against the.
I thought preschool numbers would be like GS, I mean, I guess, so you're not talking about teachers for the GSRP kids? You're talking about?
Correct, the GSRP teachers are, are charged against the GSRP.
Right.
Expenses, yes, but we have, um, we can only use about fifty percent of the director's salary can be charged to GSRP. The rest has to come out of the fund itself to run the other programs. Um, as well as we have our preschool teacher who has, I believe, a full day classroom of three-year-olds. Um, anything we run with the parents' teachers program, all those expenses have to come out of the Community Service Fund itself.
Okay, so if we were able to grow that, that GSRP by like say twenty more slots this year hopefully, uh, with getting enough interest from kids and getting enough approval from the state, um, we're still gonna potentially be like in a deficit running that program?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we have to be offsetting our, all of our preschool, early childhood, um, Eagle Club, all of those expenses have to be offset by incoming revenue from those specific programs. So even if we increase our GSRP spot by twenty spots, we can still only keep those against the GSRP expenses. We are able to charge more of the teachers this year too, because we had so many GSRP classrooms. We were able to take more salaries against the GSRP than we have in the past.
Okay, maybe interesting to monitor that in the future. Thank you.
Just real quick for clarification, the, to Steve's question about contracted costs, our new transportation contract is reflected here correct?
Transportation is its own, um, we're talking to Dean?
Yeah.
Yes, transportation, um. Transportation is its own separate, separate from the contract service, yes.
Shows two hundred and seventy loss. More than we expected.
Correct. Okay, that's good.
And that's all done, not necessarily.
That two seventy on that is, um, is there any revenue that would offset part of that two seventy? Is that like?
Not driving or transportation.
Field trips and stuff like that?
No, the field trips go through the activity lines. So the change, the two hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase to the transportation line from March was, was the estimate in the amendment. So we deemed transportation invoices have been wild and all over the place all year. So, when I set the budget with the two hundred and seventy, we didn't have all the invoices. So, looking at them as they come in, I do think that that would actually be reduced, um, because we still have in that particular line item I looked today, there's over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars remaining in that one line item that includes this two hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase. So I don't expect that we're gonna see that full one point six million by the time all the invoices are settled, but I didn't wanna take anything out, make any last minute adjustments in case Dean sends us another invoice.
It's, it sounds like it's an issue that needs to be discussed between.
Correct, I've been working all year with, with Dean's biller invoicing him, so it's something that we can work with more closely.
So the problem, you think will reduce itself in the future as far as this, um, question?
Yeah, with any, with any new contracts where you're working with new people, there's a little bit of a learning curve there, but overall, transit- the transportation costs this year also include about fifteen thousand dollars of first student expenses that were not invoiced in a timely fashion, that we actually weren't even updating to last year and looking back at the last year, so those hit this year's expenses as well. So overall, the Dean transportation contract has seen a decrease to what it can be of the first year contract.
That's good, thank you.
Do I got anything else on this one? Alright, thank you.
Just take a brief pause to switch to the presentation serum, we'll move on to the twenty-five, twenty-six budget proposal.
So, as Kylie begins, I think it's important, uh, most of you are aware with, uh, you know, our budget numbers as far as revenue coming in are pretty much set by the state with our F T Es. And so, as everybody knows, legally, they're supposed to have a budget by July one. We don't anticipate seeing that, um, so I, I, I guess, in, in, in layman's terms, this budget proposal as far as revenue is probably as good as until Kylie's dumping the presentation. I mean, it could change that quick and as most of you are aware, it has changed that quick. So, I think it's important to keep that in mind. Uh, when Kylie and I went through this together, uh, we did make the decision to be ultra-conservative, and that's why you'll see some of the numbers as far as revenue, uh, flat in regards to what we received this year. So I just wanted to make that clarification.
So like I said, so for the next seven to nine minutes, so enjoy all of this here. Okay, so we're set the budget for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Um, the twenty-twenty-five tax levy for operating sinking and debt. We're also gonna go over the individual budgets for the General Fund, Food Service, Community Service, Sinking and Activity. I apologize, I missed the, um, change in the title of this slide, I should say twenty-twenty-five tax levy, um, operational non-confident mills of eighteen mills, um, sinking of one point one seven six, which is down from last year's one point one nine one eight, um, in twenty-twenty-four due to the heavy rollback. Debt is still sat at four point one nine mills, um, which is unchanged except now it is spread against that third, um, service of the foundation. Okay, so as Russ mentioned, here's where we plan for the worst and go for the best. So, as you're aware, there is no budget, so we, as he mentioned, stay in the conservative approach. In our minds, we'd rather be conservative and plan our, plan those expenses accordingly, um, in expectations district-wide instead of coming back later with our totally paralyzed because we didn't have what we hoped for. Um, the budget assumptions are on the second page of the handout packet right behind the General Fund, um, so you can refer to those as well, but I'll go for them here. Um, the state aid funding is a zero dollar per cu- per pupil increase, so that remains at the ninety-six oh eight foundational allowance that we had this year as well as last year in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Uh, we budgeted for a thirty student F T E decrease from our spring twenty-twenty-five account. So, spring twenty-twenty-five, we had twenty-three hundred and fifty-one students, so we brought that down to twenty-three twenty-one, um, for the fall of this year, which leads to a blended count for the stated formula of twenty-three twenty-four. Times our foundational allowance gives us a total state aid funding of twenty-two point three million and so change. Um, because of increases in property tax values, we're gonna see a lot more of that being allocated or being received locally through the tax, related eighteen mills, so that's six point three million and then the state aid funding to balance out of fifteen point nine million. So to go over the revenues for twenty-four, excuse me, twenty-five, twenty-six, um, this is where you're coming out with probably, um, you might wanna reference as I go through this. Uh, the two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in state aid revenue loss of that per pupil, um, change. We removed the categoricals for, um, the district as well. So last year when they gave us the flat foundational allowance, they gave us that offsetting U A L, um, which you've heard me talk about in both this presentation earlier as well as the March presentation, but we did pull that out. That was about, um, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So again, just keeping, uh, the market service, I, um, I call that like last year's little band-aid, like, oh, sorry, we're not gonna give you more money for reprobation, but here's your U A L offset. But we just removed that, um, this year because we just don't know what's gonna happen. We also pulled out the categorical, um, for the district transportation, which this year was two hundred and sixty-one thousand. Uh, there's also a decrease in the my back interest that we get on our bond account as, um, the, as it's the series money since there, we're not spending it down this quickly. Um, we do receive quite a bit of interest in that account, but as we're spending down those bond dollars, I did produce the amount of revenue, um, by about one hundred and sixty thousand dollars and those almost three hundred thousand dollars in twenty-four to effect. So that leaves us with a total revenue, um, projection locally of seven point one million, state aid of twenty-two point eight million, federal dollars through title funding of one point one eight million. And then that other funding, um, if you remember, that's our, uh, revenue from our special education program both in the other category. So that brings us to about thirty-one point seven million dollars in revenue. Moving on to our general funding expenditures, we have a staff rate increase in the budget of three percent for all teaching staff as well as the staff increases, um, where applicable. There's a three percent increase on all the individual contracts and then two percent on the in-living administrators. A slight increase in the retirement rate was built in there as well, it was one and a half percent. Um, a three percent healthcare increase. Uh, we also built in a forty percent increase in fuel commodities, which amounted to about an eighteen thousand dollar increase there and a two point eight percent increase in consumers, which amounted to about eleven thousand dollars. So that brings us to overall expenditures for twenty-five, twenty-six of about thirty-five point nine million. Um, so if you, if you looked at the comparison from our amended June budget, just looking at the expenditure line item, we're only looking at about a five hundred thousand dollar increase in expenditures. So when you look at the projected difference in our fund balance, um, from twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five to twenty-five, twenty-six, we go from a projected loss of one point nine million, um, in twenty-four to twenty-five to four point two million in twenty-five, twenty-six. It's really just because of the revenue variable that we're just being ultra-conservative on. Um, a five hundred thousand dollar increase in expenses is really not that much in the current scheme of things. Um, so that leads us to projections for twenty-five, twenty-six of thirty-one point seven million in revenue, thirty-five point nine million in expenditures with a loss of four point two again, which would bring our fund balance from, um, six point seven million at the end of this year to a projected two point five million-ish at the end of twenty-five, twenty-six, which would equate to about a six point nine four percent fund balance. Now, do you think this is where we're at? Hopefully not, but again, we're just kinda rolling the dice with the state and wanna keep our heads around, um, what we might be looking at as a worst-case scenario, so that we can then appropriately. Moving on to Food Service, um, not much has changed here. Uh, we did pull out a little bit of federal revenue. We did see a decrease in federal revenue in twenty-four, twenty-five as well. So that leaves us to revenue for Food Service of one million ninety-three thousand dollars. Expenditures, overall expenditures, expenditures was little change in this fund except for a decrease, um, due to less expenses as we're, um, we've been providing the Food Service Spendout Plan. Um, this year, our spendout plan is only about forty to forty-five thousand versus a couple hundred thousand in prior years. So you'll see the decrease in expenditures, um, mostly due to that. So we're looking at expenditures in Food Service of about one point three million, which would bring us to the end of the year. Um, if you pull forward that fund balance estimate for twenty-four, twenty-five with four hundred and one thousand with a loss of two hundred and thirty-four thousand, um, leaves us with a projected ending fund balance of a hundred and sixty-seven thousand seventy-six dollars. Community Service, again, this is Argentine, um, GSRP, again, just. We budgeted for only this last two were awarded this year, um, which is what we were pretty much, um, we're not guaranteeing anything more than we got this year, so that's why we kept that in the budget, which was five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. Um, we did add, uh, Community Foundation Grant, which will help support our parents' teachers program, um, which replaced, helped to replace the revenue loss of the United Way Grant that we had that we lost this year. Um, so that award was for nine thousand five hundred thirty dollars. That leaves us to total revenues of eight hundred and eleven thousand three hundred and thirty dollars. For Community Service, it's, oops, I changed that. Community Service expenditures, again, there were a lot of, um, changes to this overall, just kinda eating into that fund balance that we were, uh, drawing forward from all the COVID dollars. So we're looking at a projected expenses of nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, which brings us to a loss in twenty-five, twenty-six of a hundred and forty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty dollars, which when you pull that against the fund balance that we're carrying forward, we're looking to end twenty-five, twenty-six with roughly eighty-seven, eighty-six. Okay, for the sinking fund, taxes for next year, uh, projected at one point two million. Expenditures, majority of the expenditures next year relate to side work at Hyatt, um, moving the road, um, creating parking area, the early childhood program, so the budgeted dollars there are about one point two million dollars as well as the district-wide side wall replacement that's been made out, which was budgeted for approximately four hundred thousand dollars. So that leads to, um, expenditures of one point six million. which in twenty five, twenty six would equate to a loss, which is the first time we've spent more average spending funds since I've been here than we've ever been, um, of three hundred and ninety five thousand dollars, so brings our fund balance from about four point eight million down to about four point four million in the sinking fund. Activity fund, just like I mentioned before, with twenty four, twenty five, we just funded for it in and out in those student activity funds, uh, about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which would just carry forward our projected fund balance at the end of this year, bringing us to four hundred and twenty five thousand nineteen dollars. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions, Ms. Murphy?
Thank you.
You give us a lot of numbers as you're going through your presentation, some of them don't show up on the thing, so I'm trying to backtrack, for instance, the student number, you gave thirty student FTE decrease. Roughly, how did you come up with that number? Was it just set thirty, or did you base it off of like, I always look at like high school seniors out, projected, uh, kindergarteners in.
That's exactly how it was created.
Okay, so could you give me those two numbers?
I have them on hand in the rest of the compilation.
So it worked out to be thirty exactly?
No, I actually worked it up to be about thirty nine, so we.
I'm going to turn that off for a few guys.
So we did, we, uh, look at the, we look at the seniors graduating, incoming, projecting incoming, uh, kindergarteners, and we also look at kind of our trend with first grade, second grade, third grade over the last few years, and then we try to find that, that happy median that gives us kind of what we think is going to be our projection. Uh, initially, it actually went up to thirty nine, so in kind, I looked at it based on our current trend, uh, of packings in that we have for our, uh, incoming students, our kindergarteners, young vibes, we're a little bit ahead of schedule right now, uh, so I, knowing that typically for, uh, August, we do get individuals that just show up at our door, uh, so that's at that point, again, kind of going through that conservative motif that we have for the last few years, uh, we said, okay, let's, let's look at that round number of thirty. So that's where we came up with that.
Steve, well, that's some of the numbers that I referenced, not all of them are on that front of the sheet, so. The revenue losses.
It's a separate, it's a separate, um, like, in our, in our agenda.
Okay, well, I thought, yeah, I thought I saw some different things, and it's hard to go back and forth. So that's why I'm trying to get to the point here, is it would be nice to have a little more, um, like, for instance, um, all your slides that have like, kind of fund revenues, next slide down, it's for, uh, expected for this year, thirty one seven forty, I'm towards the top there.
So next one's here?
Next one's, uh, no. So I'm funding revenues, let's start with that. I think, uh, be able to.
So here?
So that's this year's projected.
Yes, we're looking at twenty five, twenty six.
I would really appreciate if last year was side by side in all these instances, because whenever you go like that, then you go, for instance, expenditures the same way.
Sure.
And then the next one, the next one, you give us the combination, the twenty four, twenty five, the twenty five, twenty six, you give us the combination, all that information sorted, because it doesn't really include, uh, I, I might, this, uh, revenues and expenditures, it just, I might only for projected next year, so.
Steve, if you open up the other sheet, it's right there, she mentioned in the beginning we might want to follow this one off.
For people that are in here watching this slide, I don't think they have other things that they don't want to.
Point taken, Stephen, just so you know, over the years, and that's how we kind of develop the pattern that we're showing today, it's just different comments and feedback we've gotten from the board over the years on how things should be structured. So again, if we need to move forward, kind of more, more of a, uh, comparison, we, we can look at that.
Because I think you did exactly make this exact point in previous years, and it doesn't look like it's changing, so.
This is how I presented it last year, I will definitely.
I might have said the same comment as last year, so, uh, I, I assume I did, because this is a little bit frustrating when I'm trying to get to the nitty-gritty of what's the problem, if there's a problem, if there's an upside, but, um, so, community service bond, uh, funds, let's move on to that one, community service fund balance, get down there, uh, eight thousand seven hundred eighty six thousand. That seems alarmingly low.
Yes, I agree.
What's your plan? Any, hundred and fifty thousand dollar loss?
I think some of the plan is, we have to remember where that fund balance came from, and a lot of it was from the, uh, just out of COVID, COVID dollars.
Yeah, that's a scary part, that doesn't exist anymore.
Correct, correct, so again, as we look at this, uh, with the pre-K for all with GSRP money, we're looking at that, obviously, uh, we talked to Vicki about potential, uh, increases in our, uh, enrollment fees for the third grade, or, uh, three-year-olds, for the three-year-old programs, uh, our, uh, Eagle Club programs, um, and so, yeah, we're looking, trying to have some discussions moving forward, uh, so we don't dip into a negative one.
Right, and what I'm saying is maybe those discussions should be happening for next year and not throw it all in there as a projected offset of one forty eight, if you could somehow project that down to about seventy five, then you'd have a little more fund balance to moderate yourself into this abyss of zero or negative. So, uh, I just think it's something, obviously, the trend is very concerning, and I think we need to, uh, like I said, be a little more proactive on this issue versus, uh, unless there's a magical revenue source like the GSRP that could help us out, but it sounds that more and more I learn about this GSRP funding is there's a lot of limits as far as trying to offset your overall program, you know, it's like, think, well, if we get more GSRP slots, it's just going to take care of a problem and we'll, it'll help mitigate our fixed cost of, uh, relatively, you know, a very expensive, uh, early childhood director position, again, which isn't really brought up, like, again, details like that, we made substantial change in this year's, um, next year moving forward in the cost of that position. And I, it does, it is, it's not identified, I think that should be identified in these, uh, increased costs, something like that is very singular, um.
Sure, well, you can, you can see the expenditures from twenty four, twenty five to twenty five, twenty six, that it's actually a decrease in expenditures, and that increased salary is built into the twenty five, twenty six budget as well.
Right, right.
So something, sometimes.
But the revenues are.
We'll have to look at it about later.
But why are the revenues so low?
Because they're not that low, they're about fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand less than that.
Correct, because we're only budgeting with the GSRP dollars we were given this year. Last year's allocation, um, in the budget for twenty four, twenty five was about five hundred and eighty seven thousand, because that includes the rollover from the offsetting year, um, which we, but to budget flat for this last, this year, that's why it's only at the five hundred and sixty five thousand. So we could, we will definitely look at these budgets throughout the year, but moving to a new building as well, there's a lot of uncertainty on what our revenues are going to look like for Eagle Club, do we have the space for all the people in Eagle Club, are we going to have more preschool students? So to keep it, again, on the conservative side, I didn't want to say, oh, you know what, we're going to have this new building and we're going to end up with a hundred thousand dollars to our revenue, I could have done that and it would look better, but then I might come back with my toe between my legs, we don't have the space for that. So again, we're planning for worst-case scenario.
I, I appreciate the planning for worst-case scenario, but there's, there's, seems like there's some realistic planning that's not really being detailed out right now, um, that, that I think needs to be done, quite frankly, before we bring budgets like this.
Sure, the detail, usually the details, um.
I mean, you know how many rooms you have, and you know this and that, so, um, I guess, I don't think it's as pie in the sky, I don't know what it is, as you're kind of applying right now.
I'm not applying it as a pie in the sky, I'm just saying that we're planning for what we have this year, with moving to a new area, and we're happy to look at adjustments throughout the year, next year, would we have a battle on what our program revenues are going to be in our expenses, and that's when we break it down by, you know, detail by, and these, these extraneous funds aside from the general fund, typically, we haven't provided the amount of detail, especially with the projection budget, when we're not looking at an amendment and what we're changing from what we initially anticipated versus now. So next year, we're probably going to do a general fund amendment, if we were to like, we can also do a community service amendment, where we have those more detailed expenses listed up.
Like I said, I think more.
I think that's what you're asking for, is more detail, starting from.
More, well, yeah, more, but a little more real, realistic, I don't think bringing up a, a situation, unless you feel like this revenue is so conservatively estimated at eight eleven, three thirty, then, then, could, could it be fifty thousand higher, could it be a hundred thousand higher?
It possibly could, I think Kylie was trying to say is, we don't know how many Eagle Club kids we're going to get, we don't know how many, uh, individuals are going to end up in our three-year-old program, where they're paying for.
Yeah.
That additional revenue, so I think, uh, what Kylie was saying is that we, uh, we estimated kind of based on our current numbers that we had in twenty four, twenty five. We do anticipate that growing, uh, in, in the new facility, but again, until we actually see those numbers, and it's the budget adjustments, uh, I, I kind of agree with Kylie that the conservatism puts us in a better situation, because that's how I said, she could estimate it, another hundred thousand dollars, Steve, and come up with that over-under of seventy five thousand like you wanted, but it doesn't mean anything till we actually get those numbers.
Well, I like the part about being conservative, don't get me wrong, the issue though with, um, you know, Mrs. Rush mentioned some space limitations on whether or not we had enough space to create enough revenue, that wasn't something that's been expressed in this move to the new facility, it's been kind of like, talking about the other way, quite frankly, that we had enough space to get the job done with what we were going to anticipate.
Well, I think the, the space was adequate, for a interruption, the space was adequate, but if we're increasing those GSRP students, might be like taking on more classroom space.
Exactly.
So that.
Are we really spaced, do we really have enough space?
Yeah, I, I, we did talk about a whole other addition as well.
Yeah, well, that's.
So I, I, I would hate for anybody to think that Mrs. Rush is just up there thinking we're not having enough space, because we've discussed this fully at the board.
Yeah, well, that, yeah, okay, that's based on the material that's all night, so, okay.
And then if my memory serves, when I was reviewing some prior year's budgets, when I first came on, when I was still here, there were times within the past probably six to eight years where we were transferring general fund money to support these programs, so this isn't a new situation for us, we just have been riding those COVID dollars for the past five years, as we've been spending them down, much like everyone else across the state.
Thank you.
Are there other word numbers that have kind of some questions, Ms. Murphy, Ms. Murphy and then on this paper?
So, I appreciate the fact that we're being conservative with zero, um, if we were to assume they were going to do roughly a four hundred dollar, the raw math that I had, we'd need to leave, we'd be at about eleven percent fund balance versus seven?
You've got some really great math, because we ran those numbers, and I believe it was right about eleven percent.
Which is the volume projections, I'm sure, when we discussed everything throughout the years, well, too. For a point of note, maybe moving forward, if, if this is going to be the new approach with worst-case scenario, I think we should make it across the board, too, because I know before when we looked at some rates and things like that, we made, we, we still projected revenues increasing, versus looking at keeping things flat, it's just a matter of consistency, I love the C.
And I think, to that point, good point, but I think to that, too, some of our projections were based on our budget amendments.
Okay.
Um, so again, any, uh. Uh, it was actually twenty four, twenty five, but I think it was at that eighteen percent fund that, because it was at the end of twenty four, twenty five, so I know, I, uh, based on some of those that we, the, really the three percent that we looked at as, as a collective whole, uh, came from those numbers.
Okay. Very well, um, one additional question, can you explain, obviously looking at some of these figures, wages compared to fringe? Well, what was in the fringe category?
We just said salary only.
Okay.
So fringes, retirement, healthcare, budgeting, medical taxes, um, longevity, we're also going to salary, those, um, segments, things like that, going to salary, um, anything that's something that's on that salary goes into fringe.
So historically, I mean, because I'm coming up with roughly fifty to fifty five percent for fringe costs, is that traditionally normal?
Yeah, even just with the retirement rate, it's around fifty percent.
Fair. I think I'm good, that's all I had, thanks.
Ms. Murphy?
Hi, thank you for the presentation, I know this is, um, probably not the funnest part of your job, even the hacky when it comes to money, um, Mr. Heaney kind of asked one of the questions, I was going to say, I'm glad you gave us the worst case, because that's what I always take in my own personal life, but I kind of wanted to, wanted to ask you the best case, just so it wasn't all like.
Sure, I mean, I, I didn't highlight the numbers, um, I did the full. Um, I did make some adjustments after this, so it's not exactly apples to apples, it's like green apples to red apples, um, but for the ten thousand dollar accommodation allowance, this was on the loss of thirty nine students, um, that was adjusted, so the total expenditures, um, it was a loss of three point one million instead of four point two.
Okay, that sounds a lot.
Which would be about, um, which was about ten, nine point ninety eight percent fund balance. Another number I ran was eleven, so that was my answer.
All right.
And I think, to, to that note, Tab, one of the reasons we don't do three or four different scenarios, because in the end, the board has got to adopt.
Right.
A budget proposal by law, so having different scenarios, you start cutting it based in, yeah, it becomes a little more confusing for the district as a whole, so, why Kylie's not showing different scenarios, so just that by.
Okay, because I was, I knew you were really nervous, you were like, oh, I'm not being that bad, and then you said one thing about the transportation, you said that we spent more than what we kind of thought this year, was it bigger increase from last year's when we started this with the eighteen?
Well, true creation, I expect when we get all the invoices paid and backdate all the invoices to June thirtieth, we're probably going to be about what we projected at the percentage of five hundred and fifty seven thousand, um, so I padded in the budget for those extra funds, just to make sure we're not overspending and creating an audit issue later on, um, and like I said, we don't know what team's going to agree to us, but, um, I do think it's going to be less than the first student cost and relatively flat to what the original budget was.
Okay, that's what I was just really wondering about that, because it seems like more and more parents are driving their kids to school, so I'm like, okay, like, not everybody can do that, but it's, I, I live right by the school, I see the lines, you know, middle school, it can be, it can be a lot, and then when.
I said school drop off line.
Yes, and then with the budget, with the operations, you kind of, uh, also been there with the, the water rate increase and the consumer energy, they get their way of, uh, that's in there, too.
Yes, awesome, yeah. Thank you.
Any questions or comments down this way? All right, I guess I'll just, um, kind of grab what was up by our comment, first off, thank you, Mrs. Rush, for all of your work on this, um, we are, I just feel super lucky in Linden, even with this worst-case scenario, it's already been said, I'd rather go worst-case scenario all day long and know exactly what we're looking at, um, and then know that it's going to get better, and I think that's what we did last year as well, because I remember at some point going, oh, this feels, feels more flexible, you know, than it did at first, but, um, anyway, so I do appreciate that, um, and Mr. Heaney, uh, that, yeah, good math, and that's no accident, you're, you're the guy, but we need to ask his questions, too, as well, um, anyway, though, we're just super lucky in Linden, I feel like, A, to be looking at this situation even worst-case scenario, because I'm sure a lot of districts in our county and our area, if this turned, I mean, it won't be just for Linden, if there's no increase, and I'm pretty certain that not all the districts in our county or in our area are sitting at as healthy of a fund balances we currently are, so, um, I think that's a huge kudos to the entire district, to your team, to the administrative team, and everyone who's keeping a close watch on all this, um, you know, I just want to commend you and, and your group, and, you know, prior to you, Mrs. Dickey, like, we are so lucky in Linden to have, um, such great people keeping a watch on all this, whereas it makes our jobs a lot easier as a board as well, so, thank you for all the time you put into this, all the details, I know, you know, when you, you present something to seven different people, you get seven different ways you want to present it back, so, everybody's, you know, got their own, uh, ideas on it, and that's good, that's what makes us dynamic and, and, you know, a good working board, um, so, sorry for all the different ideas, but however you throw it at us, um, for a year, we'll try to be flexible with it as well, so, um, all right, with that, then, we will move along, um, to the public comments portion of this budget hearing, if there's anyone here that would like to make any comments, um, you're welcome to do so at this time. I don't know if I'm supposed to like wait three minutes, but I'll say go in once and go in twice. All right, seeing none, we'll move along, um, to our report section of our meeting tonight, and we will start, um, uh, since our student board group is here tonight, I'll start, we weren't sure you were going to be here this evening, but we'll go ahead and start with you, how about that? Are you ready? Your report is that here you are and it's summertime, so there's no report. Excellent, thanks Ella for being here, we really appreciate Kylie, even though there's a million other things that high school students are gonna be doing on a summer Wednesday night, so thank you for being here. Um, so with that, move along to Mr. Soski for Mr. Pranarik.
Yeah, thank you, I do apologize for the feedback, I just, I did get notification with this divorce prior to the meeting that, uh, the foster communication was then, they were doing some updates, so, uh, I'll report back to them, so just so everybody knows why I ran the feedback. Um, I have a couple things to report out on. Uh, if you remember, we had discussions with AstroTurf about the warranty on our turf field. Several areas of the field were bulging, colors were faded, and turf fibers were unattached. A two-fold plan was put together for, uh, for AstroTurf to come in and make the repairs, all covered under the warranty. Uh, first phase was prior to our spring sports, AstroTurf, uh, had repair specialists on site to make the necessary repairs to get us through our spring season. The second phase, uh, which started the day after graduation, uh, we basically closed down the field, uh, for most of June to work through the necessary repairs, which included all five yard lines were cut open, cleaned, and re-bonded across the entire width of the field. Uh, yardage numbers, including the shadow numbers, were completely replaced. Both end zones, including the lettering, were replaced. Every colored inlay, uh, from the, the eagle in the middle to the sidelines, the red and the black, yellow, the burgundy lines, uh, and any line, uh, colored line across the field was replaced. Uh, additional inspections of the underside of all the areas to make sure that there weren't any other underlying issues that we may not have noticed during our walk-throughs in the fall. On June seventeenth, we did a final inspection, the work completed, and actually reopened the field that evening. AstroTurf has committed to taking care of any and all issues that may arise, uh, for a ten-year period, starting from September of two thousand eighteen when the field was installed. The standard warranty is only eight years, so they have agreed to extend the warranty to two additional years, uh, with no additional cost to the district. So again, thank to Greg and his staff, uh, for working, Pete, for working with AstroTurf going through that field literally, uh, on their hands and knees. So, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Russ, um, board member reports, any board members with the reports this evening?
All right, seeing that, I'll just mention a couple of quick things, uh, Mrs. Hanson and myself sat in a professional development committee meeting with, uh, Mrs. Thomas and, and some of the CIA staff a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we were invited in as board members and parents in the district, and it was, um, exciting to see all the fun planning going on for future professional development over the next year. Um, it was really impressive, um, how Mrs. Thomas and everything really laid out in a very organized way and planned completely for the next year. It was exciting to see so many teachers, um, and district staff that, you know, it was a summer vacation and there they were, they had about professional development next year. So whether they were there because they volunteered or were voluntold, they were all excited to be there, and it was very nice to, um, you know, just hear about all the great things going on in professional development in the district. And there seemed to be a lot of energy crowded, which is also, um, really exciting, so thank you, Cheryl, for that, and, um, and the team there that's working on all that. And then I'll just echo what Mr. Soski said, I mentioned it at the last board meeting as well, um, I know Mr. Baddes is here, it's really similar here. Thank you guys so much for keeping an eye on that field and all the facilities all the time. Um, that was a huge thing to the district over time, um, making sure that that's done right. And this is not the first example, you know, the indoor turf at the, all the purpose building that had an issue got resolved, um, all the stuff going on with the bond, it's always looking, you know, the impending weather check charges that are happening, like, I, I just, I was telling Russ, I'm like, I don't, I don't think, I'd like to stay needle in a haystack, but I'm not even sure we can needle in a haystack, um, get the team to, that we have here at Lyndon keeping such a close eye on our facilities and making sure, um, that we are fiscally responsible with everything and saving money where we can, still happy next thing. So, um, I just really appreciate the work that you guys are doing for that, so, thank you. Uh, all right, so, uh, now we'll move along to special presentations, we've got Mr. Johnson here who's been very, very patient, uh, with us this evening. Uh, maybe, maybe it was interesting for you, uh, maybe not, but if you'd like to take the podium and share a few things with us about, um, MASV, uh, he, Mr. James Johnson is currently the president of Michigan Association of School Boards, also involved in the Carman'sworth School Board and the, um, Genesee County Area School Board Members Group and probably a million other groups that I have no clue, all the things he's involved in, but, uh, a super fantastic representative here for our, our local students and our state. So, uh, he's here to give us some information and answer any questions that we have this evening.
That's what we get. Good evening, everyone, it's an honor and pleasure to come here today. I just basically, I know, Ms. Luck, took my introduction away.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. I'm James Johnson, by way of current Lanzworth into the MASV Michigan Association of School Boards, I am the current president, I'm considered a short timer on the presidential board, and I basically represent, you also as we do, the original fire representative. And it's my duty to come together collectively with the MASV, and we, we talk about issues that are going on in our county, going on in our region, and we come to work together to bring forth the resolution. And one of the things, you know, we're, our, our mission statement is to provide a high-quality educational leadership to all Michigan boards of education. And then it goes on to talk about how we advocate for every student in Michigan that they have an equitable education. And with that being said, you know, the Michigan Association of School Boards offers a lot of classes, training, I know some of you have gone to some, like, some of you, I know some I don't. So this would be some of my first base of faith for some of you, but the MASV can offer labor relation classes, legal compliance training, strategic planning, facilitate, su- from superintendent evaluations, and indish- and district workshops. And also, as you all know, that we're doing the diamond celebration this year, we have the seven hundred fifty dollars per board, hopefully you're taking advantage of that.
Yeah.
All right, because you have five days left, and if you didn't, you know, kudos to you. And something that we work together to try to do is to give back to our boards. One of the things we tasked down with, what she tasked the team with, was to encourage board engagement. You know, I, I, and believe it or not, there are some boards that may have one or two representatives, usually it's a one-man board because that's all they ever speak. But we're trying to engage whole board to get engaged with the MASV for some of the training, some of the classes that they have. And I, I was actually excited today to come in and see a student rep here today. And a lot, a lot of districts and states are looking to implement that. And so I will say Michigan, believe it or not, is ahead on a lot of things because I also represent the state of Michigan on a national level. And when I go to the national level, we talk about things, how can we get more children engaged, how can we encourage our students to engage with a education in, I, a education for wanting to be a teacher, or how do they get engaged with, you know, wanting to get back to the school? And this is one of the ways is to get your students engaged, interested into what's going on in the schools because people, a lot of people think the school is just a building where teachers plus the children, children don't learn things at all. But there's a lot of things behind the work, behind the work, so kudos to you for that. And the MASV also provides, like I say, some of the conferences, some of the things they have, whatever it takes to help your district be better. And I, I highly encourage each and every board to seek out a board self-assessment. I don't know if you had one or if you get engaged in one, because you'll be surprised, the, you know, everybody sitting down or listening to the information that is being said, they really have no idea what's going on with the other board members. So a board self-evaluation will give you an idea of who, how your whole board, they, and it's a free self-assessment. If you want the MASV to come down and facilitate the finding sort of, they will do that for a small fee as well. And I just want to share that, also, I was looking at your, your board out there for your athletic hall of fame. Academic, yes, academic hall of fame, thank you for the correction. And I, I see this young man that I had the pleasure of training about month, a month ago, he graduated in twenty twenty-two, his name was Miles Ashland. And I'm going to take a picture, I'm gonna harass him tomorrow if I get to see him, and say, oh, you wanna go, huh? He, he's actually, I work with an, an older county from my shirt that do, do your books loose enough, it's in the county front of the city of Flint. And so I've been there for twenty-five years. And so my whole purpose today is just to come and tell you some of the services that the MASV offers and how the whole purpose and the whole focus is to better educate boards, whole boards. It's not basically trying to do this or trying to do that, but we want everybody to learn and grow together because Michigan is a state, you know, from an academic standpoint, they're, they're, I would say, a little lower than mid-level. But from a operation standpoint, Michigan is top tier. And I, and I know that because when I travel from, on the national level, and we talk to board of directors and executive directors throughout the state, listening to the conversation, you realize that Michigan is one of the top, far as process-wise, we're doing real well. So I just want to let you know that Michigan Association of School Boards is there to help you. I'm your representative, if you have any questions, please feel free to contact me by email, you see me somewhere, please say, hey, James, I have this question or I have that question, but I, I do my best to be accessible to anyone and everyone because that is my whole purpose and my whole job. And just, so just here, just to let you know that hopefully everyone is registered for the summer institute that is coming, coming up soon, which will be in Lansing. And so we have more classes there for you to learn and to grow and to help build a better board. And I, we had our board meeting yesterday, and one of the things I want to stress, make sure all our board members have had a superintendent evaluation training because now the new state law, as you can, and believe it or not, there are some boards where they'll just say, well, I'm staying from evaluating my superintendent, which I think is a, not a great thing to do, but if you haven't, please make sure that all your, your board members have had the training. And I also would like to know if, is there any questions for me, because sometime I can go forward and.
Thanks, James, um, I'll turn over any questions that board members have, but I just, I wanna touch on a couple of things that you mentioned. Obviously, regarding the superintendent evaluation, yes, our whole board's been trained.
Right.
Um, and has hit on the CBA one-on-one, um, and is pretty involved in, you know, we have a couple of excellent stewards on our board of, if not MASV involvement, just involvement in what's going on in education, and always asking lots of questions, doing lots of reading and, um, investigating and, and bringing things to us, which is, um, amazing. And, uh, I wanted to pop back for a second, and you mentioned about the super board rep, and just if you're sharing back with other districts or other folks about how it's done, um, I've been really proud of how Lyndon has done it this past year, year and a half, and, um, up until about a couple of weeks ago, Ella had a partner in crime, we'll call her, um, but she graduated now, so we'll, we'll fill, fill that in, but between the two, um, before every board meeting, like the meeting up to, they would split up and go to every, um, district building, um, and talk to kids and teachers and administrators, and they would bring back all sorts of fun. They bring back all, all the things going on, you know, all the activities, the fun things, you know, they'll tell us what the students were saying about stuff, and, um, so it's, it's really, um, it's really fun to hear and be able to have that like hearing to what's going on, especially with the Laurel kids that maybe don't, you know, come and say things or aren't as quick to share their opinions on what's going on, so that's really, really nice as well. Um, so I just hope to mention that to you all, so are there questions from board members, Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Ms. Luck, thank you, Mr. Johnson, for your comments so far. Um, I was really upset a couple of years ago when it was pointed out that the, uh, NSBA was involved with the Biden administration, um, regarding parents, yeah, uh, school boards, I was speaking on it, I thought that was totally inappropriate. I contacted Dr. or Director Wu Truba and expressed my concern that we should probably just eliminate our relationship with the NSBA based on that activity. And he kind of said, well, if you kind of like, we can't, or, I don't know, he basically, I don't know, he said they're sorry, whatever. Bottom line was, uh, we already paid our dues, so could we get that back? Is there any talk about that, continuing with the NSBA at the board level of you, did you guys discuss that when it came out?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, we talked about that, so actually each time we, it's time to pay our dues, we do have that discussion. The, I would say the offender of the letter, which the letter itself was not actually authorized or validated, went out, and he was removed from office. There's a new executive director there now that has a, has taken the NSBA into a whole different direction. And the focus is, once again, is more state-centric, educational-centric versus the dilemma of a letter that did go out. So yes, each year we talk about that, we, there was a spin-off called CASPA, it's called the Consortium, Consortium of School Boards. They started, it was, I would say probably seventy percent of the school boards that did go away from the national school board, they started their own organization. We also, we're a member of that organization as well, and we look, it, it's, it's in the, by, enter stages. They, they're trying to get to the place where the NSBA is, but they're not there yet, but so we are looking at both ones, seeing which is the better. Should we maintain our allegiance with both of them, or should we just go see and vote with one or the other?
So basically, you're saying seventy percent of the states?
No, sir, no, sir, I said the states that withdrew, about seventy percent of them that withdrew.
Okay.
Form an association, because there are, I believe there are six states that's not affiliated with anyone.
Okay.
They're just independently.
Do you have any, any idea how many are with this CASPA?
I believe there's ten.
Are they basically middle America states, not east coast, west coast?
No, sir, they're not east coast, west coast, they're more or less the, I would say, your central and your western regions.
So you, your, your opinion is, is that right now you, you're kind of, you support the M, 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 NSBA relationship because of the new director that they have?
I support the NSBA because of the vision that they have. It's not necessarily, it's the, it's the vision that they have. And Don Wu Truba is also on that sounding board committee. Basically, they helped guide, they took, instead of having basically a director for one individual, they now have the, um, CEO, the executive officers or the executive directors help guiding the director of the national school board.
So you're kind of confident that there's been checks and balances put in place that will keep this from happening again? When you get a rogue person that goes and executes this letter of sorts?
I will say that I am confident that the NSBA will make better choices and better decisions, and they have also, um, made a policy, the way they handle pretty much anything that goes out representing all the states, it goes through multiple steps before it's published. Not just, I type the email and hit send, that cannot happen anymore. So yes, that has been rectified and.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you for sharing and expressing your concern. Is there anyone else?
I guess the last thing I'll just mention is we did take advantage of our seven hundred fifty dollar gift and, uh, had Red Vanasse come up to the board workshop. So everybody, um, everybody was a part of that, we discussed together how we, the items that he presented to us, so, um, thank you. And you can send back the message that that keeps coming, and great.
One of the things we tasked on with, I think I said it earlier, is the engagement of boards. And whether you, I know, I don't know how it initially does, but sometime we want parents to come to the kindergarten class, we give them pizza, or we give them hot dogs, and you're gonna, both of those parents can come in. So that's what we're trying to incentivize engagement now for our low engagement district. I know there was quite a few dollars spent on a program that pretty much pulled data from all over more districts. You just ask what it wants, everyone's worried and grabs the data and information to tell you who are your, I'll say your top ten lowest districts. And we just try to find ways of engaging, whether it's, you know, if, you know, you bring two boards here, we'll cover the other two. We're just trying to stimulate boards because living in today's time, and I, I say this, we, there are districts that have doctors and attorneys that on, that sits on their board, says, why do I need education? I already got a PhD. Then they sit in your chairs and have no idea what's going on. So we try to educate all to have the same mind, the same understanding of the purpose, which regardless of your degree or your status, your main goal and purpose should be making sure that the children are getting a fair and under-veg education. So that's what we're trying to do.
Very good, thank you, and thank you, Kylie, for being here this evening as well. Um, again, it's a beautiful June evening, and the last place that you can be, but we appreciate you coming and thank you for all you do for your board and our county and our state as well.
Well, thank you for that, and I will say, as I depart, I have been working almost fifteen hours for the last thirty days. And so I'm heading back to work now, I would like to be in other places I pictured, but right now I can't, so my project is done. So thank you, each and everyone, and hopefully I, I'll see you up in Lansing in, um, in a couple of months. Thank you.
All right, well, thanks this evening.
All right. Well, thanks this evening. Our board administrative update is Mr. Gleason, our always happy to be a physical and athletic director to give a athletic update.
Good evening. Um, looking forward to maybe to share with you all the athletes and.
Can you maybe turn this, yeah? Okay. I don't think it's on.
On that? Better. All right. Well, and thank you. I'm looking forward to sharing all the athletes and exciting things they had in this year. Um, which were many, a lot of persons here too, um, with limited degrees for athletics. Start that. Oh, there it goes. All right. So the agenda for tonight, um, uh, we use some of the high school athletic athletes, uh, our FNL champions and our coaches of the year. I'll also review some of our MHSA tournament athletes. I do have a few updates as well that I'll share. Um, also Linden Middle School Athletic Slide. Um, I have some additional points of pride that I'll share as well. Unified sports, um, this year, we're at the Linden Middle School only. You can have it, um, at high school this year. Uh, we're not enough kids that want to participate unfortunately. Um, sports communication tool user, excuse me, a new app is called SportsU. Um, and I'll show you how that works. They're great tools for us. Uh, also I have, uh, in addition, I have my Linden Athletics Monthly that I'll share with you. Um, also Eagles, uh, getting back as a program that, well, that idea to that is great. And you can see the community service, um, slide with our team taking back to the community. So in fall, you can see all the numbers of participants for each sport there. Uh, we have a total of two hundred and eleven student athletes participate this past fall. On a screen there to the left, uh, you can see our district champion volleyball team. It was great to have them win on our home floor this year. And on the other side, I used to have our soccer team won districts and there's a great victory over, uh, Fett and Arable. In the winter, uh, at the high school, you can see our numbers there as far as participants. Um, for each sport, uh, we had a total of a hundred and twenty-one total student athletes participating this winter. Uh, picture there, you can see our wrestling team that had an amazing year. Uh, a lot of firsts. Uh, they won district regional titles and they were, um, uh, one of the A participants at state championships in California this year. Had a great season. In the spring, there are numbers for participants. And the total of two hundred and thirty-three student athletes that participated this spring. You can see our girls softball team won their FNL, um, uh, championship. Overall, we changed it to first back in the league almost in a year. So, you know, expectations to them. And this slide, you'll see FNL champions and coaches of the year. Uh, so we had a pretty good year. If you look at the boys' basketball team, finished first in their division. Now they share it with two other teams. But that strikes divisions, especially for our new coach. Uh, his first year, he did quite well. Our girls' basketball coach was first year coach as well. Uh, she won her division outright. So that was awesome. Uh, softball won their, uh, division and they won the overall FNL championship. Wrestling won theirs as well. Now our gymnastics team won their league. They're not in our league because FNL doesn't have any other teams. So they're, they're in the county team in their area league and, uh, they did quite well. Two years early in the league actually. And our coaches of the year, um, it's quite an honor because it's more than anybody at their peers. So they both then coaches of the year. As you can see, Madeline Brenda, uh, she was coaching here for girls' basketball. Mr. Lawrence was a wrestling coach. Mr. Darlene softball coach and Steve Jay Miller cross coach. So, um, if you've come to watch any of them, you're seeing their practice, then you know that, uh, they don't get anything behind it. They were super hard and, and it shows by their nomination and coaches of the year. And we just say tournament athletes. They're quite well determined this year as well. Wrestling, I told you already, even our way states to the OVA. Quite experienced. I've never been to a wrestling state championship before and it was, it was quite a production. You have one, you have formats and there's one degree, uh, level, uh, A, B, C, and D. And, uh, they're all going at the same time and it was quite awesome. I enjoyed it. Ball, volleyball were district champs. Again, they won it on their home floor. Baseball, won it on their home field this year. It was great. Gymnastics finished fifth in the state. Uh, and boys soccer, I showed you earlier, won, uh, the district championship as well. Qualis athlete of the month. So good, we were fortunate to have four stellar academic and students, uh, student academic athletes that, uh, were phenomenal. They were, they honored us at the banquet this year. I don't know if you know anything about the Qualis banquet, but every month at our athletic director meetings, our, our conference nominates each team, each school can nominate a student athlete, um, for this Qualis athlete of the month. Uh, we got four. So that was pretty cool. Um, Big Al, we're invited to the banquet. And that's every school in Jensen County can nominate kids and each conference may outright their kid. It was well attended. You can see, um, we had special tournament football nomination, Kay Whitey, she was then working at, uh, the softball jury. Was nominated in the Michigan Tech Committee for Football and our Chloe Chilser, Cindy was Wayne State Community for Shore Run, uh, track and cross country. National signing day at Linden. Quite a day. Very well attended. As you can see, um, we had, uh, ten student athletes that signed national letters of intent. Uh, it was here in our high school auditorium. Again, well attended. Uh, six different sports were represented, um, whatever you can name, uh, athletes or. And, uh, Mr. Siselski talks, um, at length about what happened. I thought it was cool to take pictures. I'd drive them out there every day watching it take, take form. Um, you can see it's all torn up. Um, and sort of looks like now it's almost ready now. So looking forward to this fall. Middle school athletics, quite a lot of numbers. Uh, a total of four hundred and twenty-six, uh, student athletes participated this year. So, um, a lot of that comes from tracks. We have some new coaches and young, and very popular coaches and I think almost a hundred kids went out for that school track as well. Our, our participation numbers here, Linden High School, we had ninety-six student athletes participated in one sport this year. Ninety-four participated in at least two and we had twenty-eight student athletes participate in at least three sports. And in middle school, a hundred and three athletes, uh, participated in at least one and a hundred and three that participated in at least two. So, uh, thirty-six athletes did three. Um, those numbers to me are very promising. Points of greatness. Now you see, um, Tucky over there on the, on the left side, it's a treaty, I would be signed that I'm surprised he's still there. Cause I don't want to come to the front. He wants to take it, um, by its, its size. I think it's a very focal point. Um, to go straight to the office and expect a lot of compliments from other school basketball that, so, so they have there. But, um, if you look at the first bullet, we have had thirty-four athletes of the week nominated, um, this year. So I think those numbers are really good. Kudos to our coaches who nominate as student athletes by week. Um, I meet with local athletic directors. It used to be state bank, now it's just one bank. I mean, we meet every Monday. And coaches nominate, uh, form and, and vote. And thirty-four of our athletes, uh, were blessed to get that award. Uh, we also had twenty-three coaches certified and speaking that are ABD trained. Um, there's a new training order right now with this game. To try to update that because now every coach has to be certified with the MHSA. Uh, we had a hundred percent of our, our Linden community school coaches with EAPs of emergency action plans. Um, so they put together, uh, a plan that's been pushed from the state of Michigan to the MHSA. And we walk through it, scenario of, uh, how do you trade E if someone has heart attack and the practice of. So it's, it's neat and all the kids have their, their jobs and roles and responsibilities. And every coach has a plan and I have everybody here and it's something else that, uh, is, was needed and, and required now by the MHSA. Uh, we also have U wireless for our controllers and ice. So that's gonna be wonderful. And more cords, um, but I don't know if somebody went to the U West here in basketball, we didn't have the staff or couldn't use it because it didn't work and they didn't make those in part. So, uh, but now these, these wirelesses are, works great and of course we use that this year. Um, and we also, I'd like to, uh, let you know that a hundred percent of our middle school student athletes, um, are hashtag Linden E O P certified. Uh, Mr. Odel, myself, first Friday of the school year, met with every student athlete, um, and went over goal setting for academic and athletic goals. They wrote them all out, you know, great. And, uh, I think it really helps. Uh, unified basketball middle school. So there's a link there if you get a chance to, I was watching, it's very cool. Uh, ABC highlight of the night. I watched it several times. Um, but it was very neat watching one of our own kids relax up and shop, he's winning game. And, uh, it was very nice. Uh, there's my athletics, uh, Linden Athletics Monthly. That's my newsletter. I don't know, or can you click on it? Please, thank you. So this one I just posted on Tuesday because I got most of the information I needed for May, June. Um, you'll see a message from me every month. Um, if you scroll, then you'll see a lot of stuff I already talked about. Our choice one athletes of the year. Uh, we have four new coaches. So they, those are their bios. He just came on board this month. Um, Tucky gets baseball. Yeah, we saw that. It was employees. Districts, there was their coaches of the year. Um, can you click right there where I was, I'm sorry, where Linden twenty-fourth spring all week athletes. This is pretty cool. Pretty slideshow of the base. You all the kids from, I mean, from Linden High School that were first team nominations for twenty-three. And you go down, Linden second team and, and thirteen as well. So you have twenty-four second team and, and twenty, uh, connecting several. So thirteen. All right. Thank you. Yep. But those are posted every, every month on the website. See those there. SportsU. Yeah. This, what you see there now, those three pictures, I took those right from the website. This app has been really cool. It's brand new this year and it's a little hard to make coaches to buy into it because they're so used to using, um, their own platform. But now that every coach, you can see on the left side, there's like my team groups. Every team here in Linden Community Schools has their own page. It's, it's, it's pretty easy to use. Um, you can see in the middle there, um, there's a post from Ed Cox. Uh, now, cause this is my, I see everybody's post. Okay? Um, and when I post something, I can post it to every, every team or one team. Um, you can see on there, uh, Tom Walter, we're footballer and there's posts there. So this is what I see. But if you pull up, let's say Linden McCross, and you can see all the communications that go on between all the stakeholders. Your student athletes, your parents, coaches and myself. And it's great because I can post something, say we have an inclement weather and it just came across. And someone from Michigan State came up. I can send an emergency or I can send a, a communication, um, to those, uh, parents and student athletes and coaches like that. So it's been a great tool for us. Okay, Eagles getting back. Uh, this is our community service. You can see our basketball team up there in the top left. Um, getting back to the community. That's our cross country girls in the middle, our cheerleading, uh, teams on the top right. And then our, our football team with their, uh, uh, hope we definitely, it's pretty well attended, pretty cool picture there. But we, the goal here is to have every program get back in some capacity with the community service. So we're working towards that goal every year. And then the boosters making, making the numbers here. Um, their contributions this year, uh, thousand dollar license this year for new and working sessions. Um, we purchased a new ice identity this year. It was over five thousand dollars. Uh, what that does, it's, it's an accelerated system that you can use on any appendage, any injury, um, on, on the human body for the most part. And it speeds up recovery and our kids are using it all the time and I really purchased two because it can help with rehab. Um, again, it's just to see it, it's the belief and it's hard to explain, but it's pretty cool. And, uh, boosters bought that outright because they knew we needed it and it really helps with this game and the training. Um, we also donated, uh, four scholarships, uh, to Linden students, two thousand dollars total. Uh, donated to wrestling hotels, for the MHSA finals, also for gymnastic finals. Contributed to lacrosse for the Pauls and Swings. Um, contributed to Huddle License. Uh, contributed to baseball program, baseball and softball players as well for the Pauls and Swans. Uh, contributed to football tee shirt program. Also to the track, Cross Country Tent, they donated five hundred and thirty-six dollars. And, uh, tennis every conditioning, two hundred and fifty-two. Now if you look at the, uh, on the left side of coming expenses, eight, eight year mark, sixty-five hundred dollars for the new trade for Maple. It's gonna be very well, um, deserved to. Uh, I do love water filtration system and coffee system. I guess we need to go up and outside concessions and, uh, also new safe. So thank you to boosters.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, I have just a couple of comments and I'll turn things over to other people that have questions. Um, with regard to your middle school numbers and all the numbers are super impressive. I think we have so many amazing programs here at Linden. Um, a couple of things that came to mind that wouldn't even be included, um, in those necessarily would be like the esports program, you know, robotics, um, community ed programs, Linden youth lacrosse, Linden youth football and cheer, like things like that that don't fall under like the middle school or high school sure. Um, so I think it's just notable that there are so many opportunities and even above and beyond these students that are involved in these. Some of the same or different students have these other opportunities as well, which is, um, I think really impressive for our district. Um, the SportsU app, I was one of those resistors. It's fine.
I remember.
It works good. I know. I'm sure. That's why you mentioned lacrosse perhaps, because if you put on that one, you'd see on my post. It, it's all good. Um, so I, I'm, I'm publicly, I'm publicly eating my words. It's fine. It works just like Tuesday app and it's perfectly good. Um, and it is nice that you can host things as well to all the athletic teams. Cause that's a, it's much more collaborative that way. So. Um, one thing I'm curious about, and, and I know it's a little bit outside of like Linden Athletics, but you mentioned the boosters and all the things that they're, they've contributed to. I'm curious how much, um, like intake from vertical raise or other fundraisers they had for the year because I know that's a huge one that a lot of teams participate in.
Yes.
And bring in a, a large amount of revenue. So, um, I would be curious and it's nothing you need to do right now, um, but just maybe like for next time's presentation. I'd be curious to see, you know, the contributions also and, and what they've, what we've raised, right? Boosters and community families because yes, the boosters are the stewards of the, of the ship with this. But, um, it really is thanks to all of the amazing athletic families and, and community members who, you know, have donated a lot of money. I know just for lacrosse, I think it was like eleven or twelve thousand dollars. I mean, so it's a sizable amount, which is awesome. That means people believe in our athletic programs and are willing to donate and help our kids and our community have a, a better, you know, setup altogether. So I think all around that's really impressive. So, yes, um, what questions or other comments do other board members have? Mr. Murphy?
Sure. All right. Thank you, Mr. Gleason, for the presentation. Um, I kind of like numbers. And when I see all these participation numbers for various sports, it's great. But.
But but it doesn't tell me it's a trend. I'd really like to see these things developed in spreadsheet format, where we go back three or four or five years, we see a running total. How many people were participating across country in five years, about four, three, two, one? Because I think that tells the story a little bit about maybe the program's going in the right direction, maybe it's not. And and it's just, these are, these are a point in time now, which I really can't use as a guide for our act, so. If you could do that, and at least for a couple, three years, have a running total to compare, esport, that'd be great. And then also maybe put the total numbers against the population of the building and give me a percentage, simple math, of how many people are participating. And and that running total could also, it's all spreadsheet stuff, and I really think that'd be very valuable to a layperson or ourselves to just kinda monitor the program, uh how things are going. I know you, I know this is a very difficult job, it seems like every A E we have, it's it's, I don't wanna say burnout, but it's it's hard. I know it is, cause you're spreading yourself, middle school and high school, and then you've got some assistant principal responsibilities too, high school and so on. Thank you for all that effort and I know it can't be easy. Um I appreciate the fact that you started your slide without, you skipped it, it was your London Athletics side, you showed a picture of the nineteen forty nine Jones County. You kind of reminded me when you started the presentation, there's Sean, and I really like that, because that's a, that's a history loss.
It's pretty cool.
Yeah. So that that's what I'm worried about, is that history right there is evaporated in our new concept of putting everything behind a behind a button. You know, when you have something like that, if you had a picture of that for each generation, just on, you know, as part of your display, I think that would be very helpful. To kinda like, just give history to the kids and say, wow, they they dress like that, that kind of like and stuff. Um and just maybe they recognize the name on on the people that listen there, oh, that's my grandma or something, you know. So I just think that what we're doing here with this, um and again, I haven't been down there lately, I don't know what's the latest update on the, on the whole area down there? Between Hall of Fame, where are we on Hall of Fame?
The Hall of Fame, as far as.
Induction of new members, how often does that happen? What kind of restrictions or limitations or or information do you expect to get from somebody to consider? I mean, how often are they considered, is it yearly, every year, uh?
Since I've been there, my understanding with every two years, so we are deducting two this fall.
And how did that come out, uh who are those due, I mean, if it's not, if it's not, that's fine.
The letters are in the mail.
Uh sure, sure, but I mean.
Well, we do have dates, um we do have a committee, I put it together, and we have not met um for the next two years as of yet. Um but that'll be in fall, we'll start that, start preparing for two years from now. But we do have a date, um.
Is that no, is it noted to the public about that process?
Yeah, in my, in my, in the, in the works, it's on my desk right now, that'll be a while, sure.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, I mean, how how people would find out about it, they, you know, my generation, there might have been a couple of athletes that I thought were pretty, pretty good.
We have a lot of girls sharing social media, we were getting flyer, put together, this was a night we worked on it quite good a couple of weeks ago, and it's ready to go, it's.
So I can just call you and say, hey, I think this person needs, cause I have to go social media, I'd be involved in this?
Um well, you'll have, there'll be an application on, and you'll have to see anyone who who posted, who will come out, sure.
Basically, on your website that you posted?
It'll be, yeah, it'll be posted on, it'll share it on the website.
Alright, so then um the the issue of, that's, the intent that area down there is gonna include one, other than the video history of everything that's happened?
Well, Mr. Greston and I just met with um Mr. Jensen, uh I got the quote, um we're happy with his plans to wrap the wall and get everything else that they go here within the next couple of weeks. So actually, Mr. Greston and I put pictures together that he's been super involved on the wall, um that he can use. But we liked his plan, uh he presented it to us uh Monday, and we looked at it, and he's gonna finalize it and get back to us and then we can find a approval. But we're looking at a couple of weeks, that'll be ready to go. And as far as the touchscreen, it should be done any day, all the data should be uploaded and we'd be ready to go with that as well. But we're looking forward to everything being in the in showcases, and he's just gotta get the, all the wrap up, the wrap that I need is the pictures and and how the wall's gonna be finished. It's gonna be a really cool.
Is that something that we can have access to, as it's going, with the process going on?
Uh well, he hasn't, he has to find it, he's just done a mock of course, that's all I have right now, he's trying to find it, man, soon I'll give him these pictures tomorrow.
So you don't want any input from board members about what things will look like any end, or less, what you guys come up with?
I didn't have any, I didn't have that in mind.
But there doesn't seem to be a process for that to happen?
Pardon?
There doesn't seem to be a process for that to happen? Whether it's board members or community members, well, what that thing might look like?
Just to interject, we did have a conversation maybe a little over a year ago, when they were changing over and you presented to us the plan for the digital signage and what the new space would look like. Uh we didn't have that discussion, but at that time, um not, you know, since then, but it's the same project from that time.
Yeah, but again, it's a year later, we're still looking for the final, closer to the final results. So I just, a lot, it's it's a long time for that place, things to develop without being fresh on the minds.
Yeah, sounds great, Captain, uh within the next couple of weeks it'll be completely done.
Okay. Well, those are my suggestions, I'll give you the usual, thank you.
Appreciate it. Other comments or questions, if you're counting?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Gleason, I just wanted to say I really appreciate everything that you put together here, I love seeing all the data, I love seeing all the pictures, and I can only imagine what it's like to be your role and. At least as a board member, it feels like you you hear this award and this accolade for this student athlete and this championship, and to really see it all come together in one presentation. I'm sure this is a lot of work to put together, but to some degree you must feel like, wow, we really did accomplish a lot in the back to you.
And it's, these kids were amazing, they really have a fun to work with, they're enough to watch and all they, all they need, it's really nice, so.
Yeah, so thanks for all your appreciation.
Alright, any other comments or questions?
Thanks, Christopher. My question might be kinda silly, but I was thinking that's like when my kids were younger, they just grabbed it and bought mine in. But um I didn't know, um when they were, that there was a family pack for sporting events, and I guess they they didn't know to ask. And then I didn't know that at other schools, if you were a senior and you're looking for a new guy to get in for free, do we have pro rate for that? And is it, not just on the smores or wait for kids, like the incoming freshmen, or the incoming sixth graders? So where they know, hey, your grandparents are coming for free, if we have that program? And um do the kids know, hey, before you start school, like buy the standing pack if you wanna come watch your friends play uh the middle school or the uh high school football? And then is things digital, so if some kids are like, oh, I forgot my money, or they lose it in the shoe, however they hide it, do we have that for all of our middle school and our high school kids? Where they can buy things from the the concessions as a uh payless way?
Uh at at this time, no, uh I I think we we have those capabilities where they will use, I think they call it, correct me if I'm wrong, a lock or?
Square.
A square.
Yeah, they have that standard, okay, at the football stadium, what they use it as, yeah, boosters do.
Boosters. Oh, they can carry it, yeah, they can do that. And when kids have, they don't have their actual pass on them, uh times, yeah, I noticed when he said, um or they show us on their phone that they are speaking here. That's why they paid for um their uh pay for the.
Okay, so most of the kids do know that that program's out there?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, you know, we can, at the middle school, you weren't concerned with that in middle school?
I would, I would say both schools, cause I I knew a little bit, but I didn't find out about the family pack until a year after my kids um were in, and I was like, what? Oh, I didn't know that was available, but that's my own fault for not knowing and booking, but there's just, there's some parents who work two jobs right now. Or you know, that, whose kids maybe aren't telling them that, and it takes for them to like, well, we can't afford to go right now, because a family four is twenty dollars to get into the game. Where if they're like, oh, I can buy this whole pack, I just, I I think back when I was a struggling parent, and the parents who are single or working class of jobs.
Right, you know that.
There's a value wait for you guys to all come.
Sure, I I I can push something out.
Okay. Thank you, and I did hear a little rumor from another school district that we are super lucky to have you, and I'm embarrassed, I didn't really know who you were, so I looked you up. And I heard that we are extremely lucky that you're like the ideal A D that we wanted, so.
I should just let it end with that, but I was gonna like comment on this, like, the more we do digitally for all athletic things, the better, and even for middle school. These kids are all like have their parents' apple pay and all this stuff on their phones, and it's, it is hard, cause when you're at the concession stand, they wanna pop one for a dollar, but they don't have a dollar, it's like, you don't wanna send it away. You know, so obviously, we're moving into digitally, whether we like it or not, so.
Sure.
Um perfect, thank you so much for all the information. Alright, we will move along now to the uh portion of the meeting for public comments, we have any public comments this evening? We can do that, so we will move along to the consent agenda, uh which consists of minutes from our session meeting on June fourth, invoices for the month of May twenty twenty five, and our personal summary sheet. Um do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported to approve the consent agenda as presented, all those in favor? Aye, host? Motion carries. Alright, uh action items this evening, we can have a few, uh first up is Brooke Hanson's attendance at M A S B twenty twenty five Back to School Legal Workshop on August seventh. Um Brooke has um expressed interest in attending this event, um which I think brings a lot of value. Um it is the administrative recommendation to approve Brooke's attendance at this um Back to School Legal Workshop, do I have a motion?
Support.
I will support that, um so it's been moved and seconded, any questions or comments on that, yes, Mr. Murphy?
Uh thank you, Mr. Black, um I think Mr. Ramberg asked at the last meeting if we could start to get a track on cost and of these extra. I I don't have a problem with the one hundred level, cause I think we've kinda asked all board members to hopefully do that, like Mrs. Odell is pursuing right now. Um I've been through it many, many years ago. Um I just think that, quite frankly, when I found that I started to take beyond the one hundred level, it was like, getting more information that really I wasn't involved in. I'm not gonna be negotiating a contract, teacher contract, okay, because that's not my job, so. And so I kinda wonder how many of these, uh this is, Mrs. Hanson's done a lot of classes, and I just wonder how many of them are really bringing value to the district? I mean, you feel they are, I don't, quite frankly, so um I don't know, but I would like to see some sort of a limit put on this, uh that's funded by the district. Because I, because I don't believe there's that much value to some of these classes, especially if you go higher and higher in the level, it's beyond our job scope.
Oh, yeah, and and just to mention too, and in your right, Steve, we can just agree to disagree on this particular topic, but I I've recently taken a couple of upper level courses as well this spring. There is a lot of value, I haven't done it in a while, and it's just nice, if if nothing else, in the community of other board members, and here it's going on in other districts related to the topics that are happening. I think this particular one with it being a Back to School Legal Workshop, I know Ms. Hanson always shares notes back with, you know, us afterwards or um about things that are going on. I think it's important for us to, you know, have all of that information, um you know, we do have a dis, we do have a line item, um and I, Mrs. Keller, you know exactly, I think it's around thirty five hundred or three thousand dollars. We've never hit that limit of what has been earmarked years ago for these events, and that's been a long time ago. So um you know, we can obviously look at that, and but sometime even prior meeting on the board, there was a, an amount set, and and as a board, we haven't reached that limit ever, so. You know, until we do, I I feel like, you know, allowing people to do what they want to with this is good, and now if we get to that threshold and we need to add more, uh obviously, that could be a further discussion. Oh, okay, sure.
And it has, as I was mentioning, Steve, and yeah, I do plan on bringing that in July, that's been the plan, uh with the new budget here and all that good stuff, as far as uh that line item for the for the board, cause the board does have a budget to work with it. Uh but also, I I agree, and I I think to what Mr. Johnson said, uh even to what you just said, Steve, you know, you learn more about it, you learn your role as a board member. What you should be doing and what you shouldn't be doing, what you shouldn't get involved in, what you shouldn't be getting involved in. So I I I I know, I talked to uh Brooke, I talked to Talita, I talked to a lot of you uh that have gone to these events uh to learn what's coming. I uh I mean, I try to give as much information as I can to the board, as I receive it, as I receive the information, including what's going on currently with our budgets, uh and so on and so forth. And I'll even go as far as, as superintendents, we get involved in M A S B, the three district superintendents, uh will be presenting at the October uh conference, um Traverse City, um three D consortium. Cause it is unique, but it's very, uh it's a very um special consortium that we've created that other districts can help and understand. Uh so I think M A S B does a nice job of keeping our board members informed and educated, uh just like we talked about, just like Mr. Johnson talked about. You know, their goal is to educate board members, our goal is to educate students, so the more, uh as the adults, we understand that role, uh I think it's gonna be more beneficial to our students.
Okay, sure.
So to, despite your comment about the upper level classes, so our main jobs, one of our main jobs on the board is to evaluate superintendent. If we don't understand what their job responsibilities are, how can we evaluate them properly? So I learned a lot about superintendent's duties versus the board's duties, um I know if Russ were to quit tomorrow, I know the legal process to hire a new superintendent, um what the qualifications are. We learn all this in the upper level classes, and I think they're very important.
Well, back when I took them, it was in like two thousand three or four, they uh.
So twenty years ago?
Yeah, they were not paid for, we had, we had, I think they're a hundred dollars a class. And I'm kinda wondering if that's how, why we developed a thirty five hundred dollar number, was because just to get through the basic levels, we're spending over a thousand dollars on on individual board members. So I guess lately it's been free, I don't know how long that's gonna be free or continue to be free, but I think the fact that part of it, if it continues to be free, I think that amount for the basic should be deducted off of that cap in Lord. And and then we'll look at twenty five hundred instead of thirty five hundred. And I guess I'm, what I'm, my question of the day is, is that are we close to being over with the latest, there's no fee attached to this, in in our comments here, for for its attendance.
I think it's like ninety five dollars or something like that, yeah, that one's not reversible, but it's like a hundred, around a hundred dollars.
Right, again, how's that, how's that comparing to our running total? You mentioned that.
I think we're looking at value to get out of this too, I mean, this is pending legislation, things that are hacking, that laws that could change. And when I attend these workshops, especially this legal workshop, I did it last year, I shared the video, it was recorded, I sent time steps, timestamp links to things that I think that we should have been looking for, you know? Um I share all this information back, so I consider it very valuable.
And it's, I mean, we're paying for it once versus seven times, when she shares it, which is nice that they also record it, and they don't like make you lock in, you know, that's another nice thing that I, is because if we can share the links afterwards, which is, which is valuable also. Honestly, I I know, I I would, it doesn't matter, it's really here or there, but I would be willing to, I would have spent less on these things in the last like few years than we did even like Mr. Montague and I joining the board, because we were going through all the classes, and that was before it was reversible. Um you know, now with most of these being reversible and like a handful of things not being reversible, we're probably spending a lot less than we even did, you know, five or ten years ago, like you mentioned, so. Um I mean, I still think it brings a lot of value, but I I think we're getting to back, grounding back to looking at, I guess, what what it is for and what we're spending, so.
Well, I get back to what's our real responsibility, but again, I I disagree, I think some of these things are trending into operational being like a administrative person and not board member. And uh so the idea that it kinda helps navigate us where that's not our territory by taking this class, I think there's other ways to figure that out.
Yeah, well, I can also guarantee we would never learn in a class that we should assume that we get to nominate a Hall of Fame member as a board person either, like.
No, I just, I was just asking the person.
Yeah, we have to stay in our lane though, and this stuff helps with that as well, so um.
And find language.
Any other questions or comments on this? I'll just thank Brooke for participating, cause I do appreciate you bringing it back, um you know, I don't always have the time to attend these things, and so if we have a little question later, it's very helpful.
Yeah, so um when she, when Ms. Hanson is asking, is the whole board given this access, or just the president, is there an access to the don't?
No, she 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 generally will share it out, like this particular thing, she shared it to the whole board last year, so they could go back and rewatch it.
Okay, so we'll get.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, any other questions? Alright, it's been moved and supported to approve Brooke Hanson's attendance at the M A S B twenty twenty five Back to School Legal Workshop as presented, all those in favor? Aye, host?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, up next, um Miss Odell would like to attend some courses as well, um we've got the C B A one oh two, one oh three, and one oh four classes on here. Um so it would be the administrative recommendation to approve Katie Odell's attendance at these classes as well, do I have a motion?
Move. Support.
And it's been moved and supported to approve Katie Odell's um courses through M A S B, just to make no. And it's been moved and supported to approve Katie O'Dell's, um, courses through MASP, just to make note of these ones are currently reversible at one hundred level. Um, any other questions or comments on this?
I, I agree with taking them one hundred, six levels, it was like nine or ten, I'm thinking. But I think it would be a good broad-based knowledge for, um, Miss O'Dell. Thank you.
Very good. And I will also thank you Katie for attending those. Um, you know, it takes time out of our, out of our busy days already, but it does bring value back to us individually and as a board, so. Um, all right, it's been moved and supported to approve Katie's attendance at the one oh two, one oh three and one oh four. Um, all those in favor? Aye. Host? Motion carries. All right, up next, we have the purchase of Linden High School's score table, um, uh, which I think Mr. Gleason is going to present. I know everybody's probably had a chance to look through this as well. But actually, because this is an action item, you need to, um, have a motion first. So, um, it is the administrative recommendation to approve the purchase of the LHS score table as presented. Do I have a motion?
Support.
And I will support that. Um, so we have a motion and support. And so Mr. Gleason, if you want to present, just what you have, we can kind of ask questions along the way, that would be good.
I attended the conference in March at an athletic conference up north. In my intent of researching for a new score table because the one that we currently have at the talk of previous AD, I don't know how old it is. But Mr. Kirk, I'm sure it'd be about nine years ago, he recommissioned it himself. And right now we've lost two wheels that I know of, uh, on the bottom. The thing is very heavy and it can take over pretty easily. It's seen its last, its last time here. So I researched, I got four different calls, ranging from twenty seven thousand, um, down to the one I like here at just over eleven thousand dollars. This is a digital scoreboard, has a lot of options on it. It's aesthetically pleasing, you can run ads, it has a computer in it. That, uh, can sync with our, all our wireless, uh, microphones. It can sync with our sound system, can sync with just about anything. But the cool thing is, is that I talked with Sherry St. Clair and she's going to incorporate getting this table, um, uploaded uh, or in her curriculum with her students so that they can, um, get this, all the programs set. It's going to be like, like it's that part of her class. They're going to go take all the pictures and create picture boards for each score. It, it really can do the highlights, it can run off, oh, it can do all that stuff. It would be really cool, um, for that. But, uh, yeah, it, and if you see the video, it, when I went up there, there's, I think that the salesman, uh, got it on top of the score table, it was ducking down five. It's, it is durable, it's, it's easy to move. The casters, which are the main attraction for me, when we move that table every night, um, it's much easier. The old ones are hurt, but, but it'll, it's, yeah, I look forward, um, to some assistance in the purchase of this new score table.
Sorry. Any questions or comments, Mr. Randy?
I think it's a great idea, number one. How can workally are we going to budget this? Who, what are we going to pay for it? And this is my goal to get, make sure it's not coming out of athletics. I don't think it's fair of Mr. Gleason to pull this out of athletics.
Well, Mr. Gleason also has a, a, a budget.
Sure.
That it really comes from the general fund, I mean, as you've seen, we offset that, you know, close to six hundred thousand dollars, give or take. And again, that's a ballpark number without it in front of me. So Mr. Gleason has a athletic, athletic budget that this will come out of, general fund backs it up. I think what, I, I, excuse me if I'm wrong, but the other part of it too is the boosters are purchasing the middle school board, or middle school, uh,
Yeah, we need more down there as well, so they have agreed to do that and purchase a, a small, uh, eight foot table. Not a digital, I expect like this, but yeah, we have to sort of look at stuff.
There's no way it's sinking funded or anything like that?
I'm sorry.
There's no way it's sinking funded or anything like that?
No.
I know, I, I know, but budgets are tight sometimes. My, my history lets me know a little bit about the sports budgets, so I'm just trying to look out for Mr. Gleason. That's it, but I'm good, thanks.
That's fair.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Gleason?
This was, um, not the most expensive, was it close to the least expensive or some?
Uh, it was, it was the least expensive.
Really?
Um, it was, um, you can get different pixels, uh, those are, you said, I had a core of the, over twenty seven thousand that I don't know. So I just wanted to compare. But when you look at this board and you stand that far, so if you're sitting in a visitor's stand and you look at it, you can't see the duct closed in the video that's attached. You can pull that, you can see that link, you can watch the video of the board. I was looking for something that was lightweight, metal casters, um, that was easy to store and easy to work. And then to have capabilities to, to have its own computer and, you know, you can already use a copy, you can do everything. You don't even have to be at the table, you can do it completely from your iPad.
Oh, sure.
So, I mean, you see all the new gyms, Kirk's got the new gym, Flushing's new gym, Holly, they all have, I actually got this, uh, recommendation from the hobby athletic director.
They've had this for a while?
Yeah.
Okay, so you feel its durability is going to be there?
Um, we do oxygen, but I'm.
No, as far as like the, the electronic durability.
Yeah, I'm sure it will be out there, it's like every other program, um, that you purchase.
And the one down at the middle school is?
There isn't one at the middle school.
No, they're just going to be funded by the, uh, is that something that, um, are they aware of what we're going at high school?
Yes.
And they can't swing that amount for one down there?
Uh, we've got some of the projects that we saw that we're looking at, but.
So you don't see any value in having it the same time as that at the middle school?
Um, no, I, I don't, I don't think we need ads from the down there. Um, you know, I don't, you know, I mean, you can flash their picture up there and you can show highlights and stuff like that. But, you know, I, you can actually use, there's something that we're supposed to use, is there's a revenue to sell ads.
Oh, yeah.
You know, the advertising, uh, advertising, advertisers.
Yeah.
So they will definitely be in addition to, so they will get all their advertisers down there all the time on the wall.
Okay.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions or comments regarding this?
Can I tell about it? Just curious how it's going to hold on.
I have a quick question. Um, when we agree for this, if, um, is this old one that's not really a good, can, are we going to use it for a different building or don't need it to something like?
I don't think it's safe.
It's not safe? Go ahead.
It's lost two wheels out in the hot rolls.
So it'll just be a loss?
You know, somebody in the community might get, I think, a little problem.
Right, that's what I was wondering, there's like something out there like that, that might be a pivot ball type thing and is it not that important to getting rid of it or something?
Very important issue.
Okay. And, um, when, if we have a new score, scoreboard, do we let other leagues, um, use it? Like, so my niece, for instance, she plays the NBA junior league on Sundays. And there's teams that come all over, like literally all over and do it with their kids at the multi-purpose. Will any of those be allowed for those types of programs or just they use little boards for the team?
Uh, this will stay at high school, they won't go to the NBA.
Because they play at the high school sometimes, they use the little table?
Um, I don't know, is that, if they use the score table at all, because you've been running two, um, two courts at the same time.
Yeah, and they do one court here right now at the level that my, that my niece and dad, but I thought that'd be kind of cool because if when our kids play upward, it would have like music for the little ones to come out. And it would really pump them up and then the grandparents, Ash and I, it would bring more power.
I'll check for Mr. Christians and I'll probably get, I'll find a, find a going to the chair for a little bit more.
It's a cool program. I, I didn't realize how many of these schools come here. They were going from the multi-purpose, like, well, days and weeks, and then, so there's a lot of kids that come out right early, eight AM for games on Sundays.
I'm here, I see it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase of the LHS scoreboard as presented. All those in favor? Aye. Host? Motion carries. All right, we're going to take like a ten minute break. We've been here two hours. Well, there's people that need to rest or I, I, I mean, maybe I'll take more than two minutes to go to the bathroom, so we'll take ten minutes break. Are you here for a class? Okay, we can sign your paper and vote. And you can name us later because we have a lot more to go here. Yeah, thank you for being here. Stay up, gather.
Oh, I'm not ever going to wear shorts again here. I'm freezing right now. I'm like.
It's like a ice cream back there. First I got it, that's why I wore a cape on, I'm like, it's so hot. And I'm all like, oh, I have a little tiny, but it's, I don't know. No, no, it was, it was so hot here earlier though, I was like, I don't want it.
I'm freezing.
Well, I just said yes.
Right, right.
All right, it's like we're all here, so we'll kind of get things rolling again. Um, that was refreshing, so thank you for putting up with a ten minute break, but I think after a couple hours, it's good to stretch legs too, so. Um, all right, next action item this evening is our non-aligned contract renewals. Um, so I know everybody has had this information to take a look at. Um, Russ may have some additional comments here, um, if you have any comments, and then I guess we can do the motion from there as long as we're not kind of.
Yeah, so just, um, again, it's a discussion, uh, at our last board meeting, uh, there were two, two additional that I did add since our meeting that we agreed with. Um, and, uh, and those are listed there for the group. Yeah, so that we discussed and asked.
Perfect. So it is the administrative recommendation to approve the non-aligned contracts as presented. Do I have a motion?
Support.
It's been moved and seconded to, for, to approve the non-aligned contracts as presented. Are there questions or comments? Mr. Murphy?
Uh, yeah, um, you know, this, the perplexity of this situation is there's thirteen contracts. Ten of which I don't have a problem with because we're all basically three percent bumps for the next couple of years. Uh, much in line with what we've done with the teaching staff and other contracts that have been approved off of that, like, kind of a, a value system. Where it gets tricky is where we've added, um, responsibilities to people's jobs through the, uh, well, for two reasons. One, uh, well, the main added responsibilities is the, uh, HR position that was, uh, split up and given out over the last year. As a pilot and it worked out pretty good, I guess, from a, from a operational standpoint. I started getting the job done, Mr. Aquilina did for us. Um, but again, here's the problem, we're, we're adding money to people's contracts. But is there a time factor that's being added? Because I don't see a, any kind of a like, yes, uh, I, I'm getting a twenty percent pay bump. Am I working twenty percent more hours to make that happen? And, and I don't think that's the case. And so that being said is how is it happening? Well, I'm just more efficient in my job and that's why I get it done in the same amount of time. Well, in the private sector world, we are, we're constantly being challenged with more efficient, do, do more things and not necessarily extend our workday. In, in cases like our teachers and our other people, we'll, we'll, we'll go to them from time to time and, and say, hey, you've got a planning period. Um, as a high school teacher, we'd like you to teach this class, okay? So the teacher gives up the planning there, but they're compensated for it. But they're still going to have to go back at home now and make up those hours to do the planning. So it's not like, it's, it's, it's not the same thing. Yeah, they're getting additional bump, but they're still having to go back and work up that time. So this case, I don't see that guarantee. And I see bumps that are just even amounts, ten thousand, twenty five hundred, whatever. Again, those are just kind of, it's hard for me to give that, that that's a fair issue when, when it's done like that. It doesn't seem to follow any particular, well, I'm working twenty more hours, ten more hours, whatever. If that was the case, I wouldn't have any problem with any of these, uh, changes. But because those cases are not the way it is, at least they're not being, we haven't had a presentation. There's a very impressive list of the things that were being added to the job scopes of all those various individuals. But what does that really mean? And again, if they're able to get it done under their current hourly, uh, scheme, then why are we compensating more? That's what happens in the real world in the private. It seems like we're, we're trying to get a capitalistic addition here to basically a socialistic system. Where everybody gets the same percentage bump and that's just the way it is. So, but then we're giving these little carve-outs for capitalism to come in and say, hey, yeah, why don't you become more efficient and then I'll reward you for it? So personally, like I said, in, any contract that is just a straight three percent, no, no change, no other changes, I'm all for. But these ones that have these other add-ons, I, I don't have enough information right now to support it. I just, I just don't.
Can just answer some of that, Steve, as we talked earlier ago. Uh, this year we did not, we did not track every minute of every hour that was spent on HR duties. I can tell you that, yeah, it was above and beyond what our normal typical day looks like, including those that are hourly employees.
Yeah.
Including those that are hourly employees. Did they do their work within their, their eight hour scope a day? Hundred percent. Uh, was it challenging? One hundred percent. Were there times where maybe they didn't, uh, get, where they worked during their lunch, or they worked during their breaks? Uh, or, I, I know this is looking truthful, where they may have come in earlier to stay late, didn't punch in enough. And those employees we talked to, because they've got a contract that says eight hours, but to do that job. Moving forward, if the board would like us to track every minute, uh, that we're doing HR stuff, we got no problem with that. We could do that. We could do that. I think from a district point of view, uh, I've heard you talk very candidly and very openly with me about adding costs to the district. So we're trying to do that same duty with the same impact, uh, for, I think it was fifty five thousand dollars versus a hundred and thirty thousand with benefits that we were paying Mr. Aquilina. Uh, we go back down that road, I think to your own, uh, comments, not having an HR person is, is detrimental to our district. There's no doubt about it. There's somebody able to cover those duties. It's very detrimental. I think HR has evolved tremendously, uh, in the last five to eight years, uh, from where it was to where it is now. Um, and we're seeing that in, in all different aspects, even in the educational industry. Um, so if that's what, the board would like for us to track those minutes, we'll be more than happy to do that. Um, and I think at that point though, we may come back and say, we got to do something different.
Because we're not being compensated enough for those minutes.
I, I mean, if that's what you're going, if we're overcompensating because you don't believe we're doing the job.
No, I.
Then we, we can show it one way or the other. So I think it's just a matter of, if that's what the board would like, then that's the route we can take.
Um, I'm going to kind of just interject here for a quick second, um, and indicate that, I know, like to Mr. Murphy's point, like it, it is tough when you're, it's a salary position. There's probably some weeks that they're maybe not even working an hour more than normal and other weeks they're working fifteen hours more than normal. It goes, it goes without saying, it goes with the role, you know, there's ups and flows in the time of year. Um, that's just with any salary position anywhere. Um, I think, you know, as a board, when we made this decision, I thought it was a very creative solution to both try something different and, um, and save some money, you know, on, you know, in case we end up, you know, down the road needing to cut some things budget-wise, we don't have to cut a position, you know, now we've, you know, got these. budget-wise, we don't have to cut a position, you know, now we've, you know, got these things already in place, um, asking these people to go above and beyond doing these things, learning new skills, um, taking care of very important parts of our district, I think is really important and they definitely need to be compensated for it. Um, I, I mean, we can certainly, you know, discuss this down the road if it's something that the board, um, in general agrees with. I personally do not want anybody spending a minute tracking any minutes of work, I think that's absolutely insane, um, that would be totally ridiculous and, and would, and show that we have mistrust in our administration, which we do not. Um, so I think that's not an important, um, activity at this point in time. Um, but I do understand what you're saying, Steve, I, I, I get it, I do, I, I really do, um, but also from like a business perspective of seeing these duties and how important it is to the district, I think it would be completely unfair not to compensate as presented to the individuals that are taking on these very, very important legal roles for our district.
The problem is, is that we just made a guess at how much time a person was gonna actually do their scope of their duties, some have ten things, some have five.
Well, I don't really think it was a guess, and I know Mr. Maddie is ready to jump in here or something, but, I mean, honestly, I feel like if they were really guessing, they probably, like, we probably owe everybody more, quite frankly, but that's just my opinion, but Mr. Maddie, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just saying, I mean, I, I work with salaries and labor and wages almost every day for, you know, over a thousand team members and, and hourly and salary, and, and there's a lot of art and science that is involved with figuring out what the right compensation level is, and I'm confident that over time, that I think we have jointly done a, a solid job of trying to keep people in an area where they are compensated properly for their job, they're, we're shooting for roughly that fiftieth percentile of equivalent positions within the county, and, and that's not always going to be necessarily predicated on exactly, is that a percentage of the increase of how many hours they are, just to this luck point, that there's, there's more, this is more about based on responsibility rather than the number of hours. And I think that's how you have to look at salary positions in general, I think most salary positions, from my experience, are, are usually forty-five to sixty, seventy hours, and, and, and that's, that's just the way it is, and, you know, and we always say at work, if someone can, you know, get their job done in thirty hours, that's great, if they take, need to take sixty hours, well, then, you know, you might have to do that some mixed well, so. Uh, I'm comfortable with the way that this is all playing out, and I agree with this luck that I would not wanna, you know, waste more time on somebody thinking about tracking hours, and, uh, the last thing I'll say is it was obvious to me, and the line item for human resources, when we looked at the budget, I think it's a six, six thousand dollars, so that's obviously not related to paying a salary for that, so we are saving on that line item, and, you know, and let's not forget that we have the number two school district in Genesee County, and so we have, you know, we have solid retention, I believe we have generally satisfied employees, and I don't wanna do anything to disrupt that momentum that I think we have, is a big part of, um, how we've been treating our wages, is a big part of that.
And, and just so the board's aware, we, we did, I mean, we worked with Kylie and Cheryl, um, and the people involved, uh, Jennifer Bentley, Gary Ray, Michelle, uh, and we, we literally sat down and tried to determine what that percentage was, um, when we sat, and Kylie can speak to that in due time too, if you need to, uh, to look at how to come up with, um, aid of stipends as well as the job duties within, within our department or within our building. So there was some time and effort put into that, uh, to kind of determine the scope and sequence of who's doing what.
What I do like about this as well, and, and Russ and I talked a little bit about this, um, as well prior to this meeting, is how everything's kind of itemized out, you know, if down the road it's determined that going back in the direction of having an HR individual is what would be a better solution, you know, we can easily take these responsibilities as they've been, you know, kind of added on, and, and configure that position again, and then right-size the positions, you know, as needed.
And deduct money from all those people?
Well, if they're not doing the job anymore?
Right, yeah.
I mean, they're not working the extra hours, yeah.
My, my biggest concern is, is that there, you know, there was an effort initially to try and figure it out, but there wasn't really a period where you even kind of like tracked it enough to find out we were right on our assumptions, this person is doing this amount of work, that person's doing that, and just to kind of trust and verify the numbers that they came up with. There's, there seems to be an unwillingness to look at that, and that's disappointing.
I, I, I don't think there's an unwillingness, Steve, I, I...
Well, by this luck...
I don't know how you quantify, I don't know how you quantify that. I mean, if you wanna look at the amount of time, um, that I spent with these, you said thirteen individuals going through contracts, we gotta go all the way back, probably starting, and I think my first meeting was in November, with the technology and media assistance. Um, so, and when we talked to Ms. Rush about the benefits and the Red Rover piece, Jennifer Beth able to Red Rover piece, holy cow, uh, or FMLA and working through, uh, with some of the things that Ms. Callard has worked with, I mean, uh, FMLA is not just, hey, you're an FMLA, FMLA, there's a process and there's, there's back and forth and there's communication and there's time and effort put into that.
Right.
And researching, including negotiations, or some of the other, Red Rover, like I said, I mean, that, that alone could really, in some cases, be a full-time job. So I, I don't know how to quantify, other than, as superintendent, the person in charge of this district, uh, I, I can tell you that I don't think we missed a beat, but I think it was because of the people we have in place, uh, that took the responsibility for these positions. Other people, we may have a different result.
So I don't have a problem with the way we've broken up and shared responsibilities, tried to maximize who might be able to handle certain parts of the duty and properly, but I just, again, the numbers were so even, ten thousand, twenty-five hundred, whatever, that, that didn't show to me that it was necessarily calculated based on... I just would like to see some sort of a study that said, hey, my, my job, I was typically spending X amount of hours a week on this, and have each one of those individuals input that, uh, into the thing, and then you could kind of come back and give us some updates, say, hey, we're, we're on certain schedule here, or maybe there was one job that didn't pan out, should've been more, I mean, should've been more, because they were putting in more percent of their time than, but again, again, it still bothers me that their salary is based on forty hours, and they're still getting the work done, plus the added responsibilities in the forty-hour period. Now, if they're doing it at home, other things, extra, I don't have any problem with compensated for extra hours. Just saying this, we expect our teachers, we expect every staff member to become a better staff member, at least we hope they will be, they're a better teacher, they're more efficient, so they're growing with experience too, all the time, and that's part of their compensation that they're getting in their three percent bump. It's not additional to that, because all these people are getting the three percent bump, plus the addition, so, I'm just saying this, be careful.
Oh.
Be careful.
Okay.
What'd you say?
Move the phone question.
Alright, I'll support that, I guess I'll say, but it wasn't necessary, so I'll, I'll support that. Alright, so it has been moved and supported to approve the non-aligned contracts as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote.
Aye.
Motion's yours. Alright, moving forward, um, with the superintendent contract update, um, similarly to our previous item, um, this involves the superintendent contract update with the additional human resource language, human resource responsibilities, um, and, uh, additional, uh, salary, change in salary expectancy with those additional responsibilities, so hopefully everybody's had an opportunity to take a look at that, um, ask any questions in advance if you had any specifics, um, it is the administrative recommendation to approve the update to the superintendent's contract as presented, uh, do I have a motion?
Support.
Support.
It's been moved and seconded, so at this point in time, we will, um, entertain any conversation about this or discussion questions. Ms. Ramner?
Um, I have a, a question when it comes to, actually, to see a superintendent having an HR, um, department, um, part of it. So if a staff member has a complaint against the people in charge of HR, is there a way for that staff member to bypass, like, not that this doesn't have, let's say this, we're unfortunate enough to lose Russ and Cheryl down the road in three years, and a new superintendent, hypothetically? If that staff member has, or a couple of staff members have an issue with those people who are now HR, what would be the, the remedy for, for that, for them, as, as an employee?
Yeah, I think that's a, a good question, Russ might have some comments, actually, we talked a little bit about this, um, him and I did as well, and I think that, actually, if the benefits have multiple people with HR responsibilities, because then if you have one person, you could go to the other one, where when you have just one HR person, and you have an issue with that HR person, then who would go to, right? So I think it's a very valid question, but we did have some discussion around it, also we have some additional comments.
So a couple things, I think, sure, I guess a benefit has multiple people, there's multiple people to go to, if you have a conflict, potential conflict. We have policy that also outlines chain of command, so, uh, if, if a teacher has an issue, they should start with a principal or assistant principal, uh, you know, assistant, superintendent, superintendent, um, potentially business, you know, again, uh, depending on the situation. So if somebody has a problem with me, if they go through the chain of command, their next step will be with the board.
Let's say, let's say it's not you, but...
No, 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 I, I'm just gonna give an, an example, I mean, let's be honest, it's about my contract, superintendent's, the position's contract, I understand that. Um, so if there, there are, there are steps in place through policy as well as multiple people, now if somebody's got a problem with all those people, then I guess they're coming to the board, you know, hopefully they go through the chain of command as our policy indicates, um, so, I mean, I guess that answers that.
So legally, they're allowed, if they're in a certain type of contract, um, with their union or whatever, as far as a employee, even if it's not a union employee, they, they could say, well, I tried everything, so I'm gonna go to the board, they won't be in trouble?
Uh, that, that, well, again, there's different steps depending on what you're talking about, you know, if there's, if, if it's an harassment issue, our policy will dictate chain of command. Uh, if it's a contractual issue, if it's a, a non, if it's an aligned group, a collective bargaining group, again, they've got representation, they've got the NDA, uh, if it's a non-aligned group, then yeah, they've got assistant superintendent, superintendent, potentially even operations, if it involves some of them, uh, both these can, for that matter. Um, so again, people, uh, there's supervisors in place that could help with that chain of command. Now, if we get to the point where all of those, uh, steps have been exhausted, including potential legally steps, whether remediation, arbitration, uh, so on and so forth, then, you know, eventually the buck stops, so forth.
Okay, I was just, um... I was just asking, because I know how we said that, if you're a board member, you can't even sit in discussions, um, was it fair to talk about contracts? Um, but then Mr. Murphy was, that's something he wanted, and we decided, no, we're not gonna allow that, so I was just wondering that too, like, going forward, is that something that we're being transparent, like, if we tell them, hey, you can't sit in the negotiations, uh, because you have a, a family member that works for the district? I guess I'm kinda asking to protect the, the employees and staff, and also possibly the superintendent, and they're saying, A, this is a transparency, it was kind, kind of corrupt, so I was just trying to look at, like, the way the public would look at this, because we're kind of the, the template service, right, you do it this way?
No, no, no.
No? There are other districts that do it, the way that we're doing it?
There's other districts that, there's, there's other districts, and it may not just be the superintendent, it may be the s... I know there's districts that the superintendent has superintendent duties as well as HR duties, I know there's districts that are very similar to this model, where, you know, the superintendent, maybe the assistant superintendent, maybe the business director, uh, other individuals have other duties. Um, we've also had that too, within our district for a few years, where our, our, um, our financial director was also our HR director. Uh, so again, we've had individuals, uh, or there are districts with individuals that carry multiple duties within, uh, their job discretion or within the scope of their job.
And I think with something like this too, Jack, to your point, like, you know, if, God forbid, Russ decided to leave the district, you know, that's as a board, when we're, when we're doing a new search or a new superintendent, it's something we would need to consider, is this an appropriate new contract for the new superintendent now? I mean, not, maybe at that time, we have to make a different decision then, like, okay, we, this, we have this great person, but they're not willing to do HR responsibilities, or aren't able to, or don't wanna take on the extra, you know, duties or whatever, they may wanna negotiate, that's not true then, right? So, this would always be part of that, I think right now we're in a good position where we have folks that are able to do it and willing to do it, um, but it could change with people, you're absolutely right, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, and I could talk to Russ about this earlier as well, 'cause I'm kind of having similar conversations that everybody's having, um, and I felt bad because I, this is the last meeting, or I know this was a bit of a discussion, so, um, another question that I had for him was, when this was voted on last year, you know, was there any discussion about coming back after a year or two years of moving forward with this format, and kind of looking at what were the ups and downs, what were the pros and cons? Were there too many balls in the air, did something get dropped consistently? How does staff feel? Is this working well for staff? Is this lending itself to a healthy work environment? Because the reality is, our boots on the ground are our teachers and staff members, are they feeling that this is supporting them, or how are they feeling with this? And I feel like, and, and talking to Russ, you know, I, I definitely see the value in this viscerally, it's absolutely a benefit to us, it helps to split it up across people, it's a whole person job, normally, so you have to split it up across people, there's no way around that, but I also question if it's something that we could, as a board, say, we like to see some input from staff in, you know, by January or March or something, because it would help us get a feel for, is this continuing to work well? Is this something that we need to reevaluate for a variety of reasons? It's kind of a big umbrella, but over one person or two people or whatever, I'm curious what this is looking like overall for our district, because even Russ said, like, it doesn't always work well, it just doesn't, it's just the reality. So I'm curious what, how this is impacting our district, if we could get a temperature read on how this is really working for the full district.
Yeah, I think that's, I mean, I think that's reasonable, and I've chatted a little bit about that too, you know, and, and I think, um, you know, we're being one year in, it's kind of hard to tell right now, but, you know, after another year or so, you know, that might be...
That's exactly what I said.
Yeah, yeah, I kind of, it, it kind of didn't feel good, so, I think that's a reasonable thought for sure.
I'll just say that real quick, I mean, I, I like how you put in temperature read, I mean, I wouldn't want, you know, Mr. Siskel or anyone else to feel like they need to start tracking hours, but it could be framed up as, hey, what are your magnitude? You say you spent roughly two percent, three percent, five percent, ten percent, twenty percent of your time doing this, and then if you ask everybody that question, then you can start to maybe, you know, get, get a picture for, I mean, it's, it's probably difficult because it probably goes up and down like this, so...
Yeah, I mean, I'm curious for the people who have taken on these responsibilities, is it really overwhelming? Is it really realistic in continuing to do it long-term? I'm also curious for the people that it affects down the line, it's a trickle-down issue, you know, so, are our balls being dropped, that's affecting our people, that's making it difficult for our boots on the ground with our students? You know, their teacher's working environment, his kids' learning environment, and our, our job here is to be focusing on students and their role being very important, so, how is it really impacting them? I'm curious, I mean, I, you know, I just would be really interested in looking at that, and I agree, I don't think you could've done it at the end of this year, it's, you're figuring it out, you're figuring out, it is and how's the process is. I'm just curious if looking by like March-ish next year, it would be a really good time maybe to get an idea of how that's working, not only for the people who are doing those actual responsibilities, but also for the staff across the district.
Or, and something simple, and this may be, this sounds simple, and I don't, again, know why they didn't, the minutia of it at all, I guess just an idea that came to my mind is even like a, um, you know, almost like a how we do thing, like, when people come to administration with an HR type of thing, you know, like, just a quick follow-up, like, did this work for you? Like, is there anything like that, you know, quick things like that, like, like, I don't know, like, that's kind of how the service industry is, right? Like, how are we, how are we doing, so? Uh, but there could be something simple that doesn't take anybody's time, you know, to kind of get a feel on stuff like that, so I think that's a good thought for us to think about and, you know, we can... I didn't find your question that is.
Catégorically, wouldn't this spend assessment fall under operational? I think part of the frustration of being on this board and in general is the fact that these minds get bored sometimes, so as far as like the actual assessment, is this something that needs to come back to us, or does Russ just need to report to us? I mean, we don't, we don't get input.
Correct, yeah. I would say this is something that Russ just, you know, lets us know how it's going, and then, I mean, ultimately, it would fall on his evaluation, you know, us and board. I, I appreciate you saying that, because that was actually in my minimal, and I didn't talk about surveying, but, yeah, you're right, like, it, it's not our role, we get into minutia of this at all, and we talked about names earlier, you know, kind of keeping with that, I definitely would say this is something that just, you know, we check on.
Unfortunately, they do when you just say this work ethic.
Yes, correct. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Miss Luck, yeah, I, I'm, I'm forced to basically oppose this contract for the same reasons I oppose the other ones, because we haven't done any kind of a study to verify that these numbers, in case of Ross' twelve-thousand-dollar stipend, is the appropriate number for his increase, I say increase, as far as I'm concerned, when you're the manager of the district, I mean, that's part of your responsibility, it's human, human rights, everything is a, when you're the top one...
It's human, human rights, everything is a, when you're the top one, two people in the district, you don't really have a super defined scope. You just get it done. And so this, when I see something like this get added in and a price gets put to it, whatever, that's the way you feel this has to be run. But the bottom line is, there needs to be some sort of tracking. This is the perfect time, we've had a year of going through, they've worked a lot of the kinks out. I think the system's working out pretty well as far as operationally. But I'm just not sure the numbers that attach to each one of the jobs is necessary, if invalidated, is appropriate. That's what I would like to see us look at, and then we can move forward. Thank you.
All right, I think, and I think we all hear you, Mr. Murphy. I guess just one last comment before we call this to a vote. I would be disappointed as a member of this board, if, as we have a highly effective superintendent here, if we have a board member made this contract, that would be very disappointing to me personally, and I think that for our district. But at any rate, it's been moved and supported to approve the superintendent's updated contract as presented. All of those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, up next here, we have our amendment for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five general fund activities, fund of food services sinking fund, community services budget, so all of this per our presentation earlier today. It is the administrative recommendation, as I said earlier today, it actually was a spoiler today, was to approve the amendment for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five general fund budgets as presented earlier by Mrs. Rush. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the amendment of the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five general fund activity, food services sinking fund, community services budget as presented. Any last minute comments or questions on this? I know we have a lot of discussion earlier. Seeing none, all of those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, up next is our, to set the tax levy rates for twenty-five, twenty-six. This is one of those things that we have taken a look at this information, based on information presented to us, the recommendation aligns with the strategic planning goal for goal number four, sustainability. It is the administrative recommendation to set the tax levy rates as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Or? It's been moved and seconded, so any questions or comments on this? I know it's one of those things that generally is all agreed upon, but any comments or questions on this item? All right, seeing none, all of those in favor? Aye. Post? Motion carries. All right, we have the adoption of the twenty-five, twenty-six general fund activity, food services sinking fund, community services budget as previously presented by Mrs. Rush. It is the administrative recommendation to adopt the presented twenty-five, twenty-six general fund budget, general fund activity, food services sinking, and community services budgets as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And I will support that as well. So any additional comments or questions regarding this, or whatever? Seeing none, all of those in favor? Aye. Post? Motion carries. All right, moving on to something that maybe we can all just take a little deep breath and simply layer in our seats for. LHS overnight volleyball trip to Northwood University, July twenty-second through twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-five. This is something that comes to the board every year, the volleyball team takes it overnight to Northwood. We've got the information on it, so we're even in advance. It is the administrative recommendation to approve this overnight trip as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And I will support that as well. So any questions or comments on this trip? I guess I'll just kind of quickly, that I think it's nice that our coaches, in this case, Coach Mason, makes the time to have this opportunity for the volleyball team, it's a great training and key bonding activity for them. So it's nice that they have these opportunities. So without seeing any other questions or comments, all of those in favor? Aye. Post? Motion carries. Again, on the later end, another LHS overnight trip for the varsity cheer team to Grand Valley State University on August first through third. Again, we have been presented this information in advance. It is the administrative recommendation to approve the overnight trip as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved, so more?
Well, I'm just.
There we go. Any other questions or comments on this overnight trip? Yes, Mr. Murphy?
Thank you. Just, I'm disappointed in the cost of the camp. It's over twice what the volleyball camp is for a single three-day at camp. Kind of out of the way that that's the case, I don't know if they, I mean, obviously, it's going to be funded by the individual participants. The school district's not paying for it, but I just hate to see it get to the point where it starts keeping people away from doing the activity because they can't afford it. It's just four fifty versus two fifteen for the camp for volleyball. It's a substantial increase on paying. I certainly support the idea that they, you know, go to this, get this training. I would suggest looking around for a better camp, or a more adorable camp, I shouldn't say nicer. Thank you.
Yep, and I understand what you're saying there, I do think, you know, we can't really compare the two because though it's the same timeframe, it's different activities, things like that. I would not assume that the coach is involved in this. You know, if it gets to the point where they feel like they're out pricing the participants, that they would look for something different or that's a different idea. So I guess I'm going to move forward with the assumption that everyone that's going is willing to pay this cost. And then if somebody did have a financial situation, that there would be a combination made for that student. I would, I would assume as well, so. Any other comments or questions on this one?
I'll just kind of add to your previous comment about the coaches and the two girls of the team, they're, they're very happy to have a new coach. This has been around with the coach, so, yeah. Yeah, I appreciate her doing that.
Yeah, very good, awesome. All right, all of those in favor to approve the overnight trip for varsity cheer team to Grand Valley?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. All right, up next, I think this might be less, but certainly not least on our action items for this evening, we have Linden High School bid pack number four for District Five concrete replacement project. Bid pack number seven, yeah, there you go. So we have the information that we've looked at in advance. It is the administrative recommendation to approve bid pack number seven as presented. Do I have a motion? I know Mr. Mattes is here, we can motion and we can get this information. I'll, I'll say so moved.
Support.
Perfect, Mr. Mattes, if you have additional stuff you want to share with us, then we're, and we're just going to ask questions and comments as you're going through your information.
I'll probably add if anyone has any questions specific to this, but basically it's going to be a repair, tear out, a replacement of any of the walkways throughout the district that are in disrepair. We're going to be mudjacking, some of the sidewalks, which basically is lifting ones that have sunk in over at Linden Elementary School. And the front of Linden High School is going to get basically a complete makeover. Two new entry walkways, a new circular area where we get in like a turf eagle. We're going to put a new flagpole, landscaping, that type of improvements to the high school, which are well, well needed. I mean, we have the original sidewalks that have been there since nineteen seventy-four, or five, when the building was open. So a significant facelift to the front of the high school in addition to all the other things we're doing throughout the district.
So you got any questions or comments on this, please?
Yeah, I'm just concerned with some of the, mainly the middle school had a lot of sand.
Yeah, there's a lot of poor soils.
I know there's stuff soil out there.
We've, and so included in this is new, is undercutting and new subgrade underneath the concrete. Because there's so much movement in it, there's a lot of groundwater up there. It winds up on the bottom side of the concrete, so there's stone or nice specific sand that our engineers took into account to try to combat, you know, some of the issues that we've had, not only here, but even at High and Linden Elementary School. Something similar.
Do you predict that these new installs are not going to have the same fate that the other ones had?
Well, we took that into consideration and they engineered a system and a design, a way that they do integral curb into this and breakaway points, which we didn't necessarily have. The other thing we found at middle school is the concrete thickness is significantly insufficient. Probably not what we bought and paid for back when we built that. You know, when we, when we took some of these areas out, the, the subgrade was horrible soils and also overloaded, so the concrete itself was very thin. So we know what to be done right this time, and there's a different approach, knowing that we have so much groundwater in the soil out there to try to combat this. But in Michigan, with concrete, it's pretty hard for anyone to guarantee that you won't be cracking. But we know that what we've engineered is a system that should be older than ours than what we've had, you know.
Were you surprised at the variation in quotes?
You know.
Big price gap between the.
Sure, we, really, we interviewed the second low bidder first because we figured that the low bidder missed something on middle school. There was a significant difference in that. He had a chance to back and then look at that and felt very comfortable in his number. So I think a lot of it is just because of the workload that's out there. A lot of these guys have had a lot going on, and they don't necessarily need the work, but they'll throw away numbers at it. And maybe, you know, something will stick. You know, the intention with this is to do it more towards the fall, and we get done with the constructions going on in buildings right now, just so we can be on top of it and manage it better. With that being said, in front of the high school, if at all possible, we'd really like to try and get some of that core as early as possible before school starts, so we're not trying to shuffle people around. But if need be, we talk it through and we will do that. If they can't pour it before school starts, then we'll, then we'll do some shuffling and have entries changed as we're doing a double pour or what have you. But I think the high school itself, if you look at the drawings I provided, it's going to be a significant improvement, various sets of pleasing, you know, with a big, a big giant flagpole out in the middle of it in a twenty-two-foot circle that will be the top in the end. You know, so I think it's going to be a quick facelift in front of the building.
Yeah, I'll just say, I hadn't known that gross had become, had come from sorts and gross. I've known sorts and gross for a long time, so I saw them on there, I looked up and saw that they became gross construction just a couple of years ago, I think.
Right.
And I know that they've got a great reputation in the area, so, yeah, happy to see that.
Yeah, and they do, they do common school and all the municipality concrete work, so, yeah. They've got a great reputation.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thanks, Greg, I don't know how we got to the item number eleven, but I want to say out loud, when it comes back to bid pack number eight, I think usually first.
I think I know a guy, right?
Right, like, what have you done? All right. Anyway, it's been moved and supported to approve LHS bid pack number seven, District One concrete replacement project as presented. All of those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, we don't have any discussion items this evening, so we do have a closed session. So if you have any motion or support to move to closed session, per section A C, like a bargaining strategy or the opening act. Order? Okay?
And I will add, I will be recusing myself due to a conflict of interest in the closed session from the discussion in the vote.
Very good, any other comments? Okay, all of those in favor? Aye. Post? Motion carries, so we're going to closed session eight.